Good evening. We'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we have a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Commissioner Lama?
Here.
Commissioner Stuvasan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Goldman?
Here.
All members present, madam.
Okay, the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to call Mr. Diaz de la Portilla, judicial candidate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I'd like to express my very deepest condolences to the family of our resident in our city, Margot Solomon, who passed away on Monday evening, and I want to express how devastated I am, and I speak on behalf of the commission and our entire community. We are just devastated and heartbroken about this loss of someone in our community, and we extend our deepest condolences to her husband, Tim, her beloved husband, her son, her dog, and really the whole family. Our heartfelt condolences and expression of such a great loss. Thank you so much. I'd like to call up our chief of police for our invocation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. I want to take a moment and acknowledge the terrible tragedy that occurred on Monday that will undoubtedly change the lives of many forever. When incidents like this occur, we as a community mourn. As chief of police, I am not impervious to mourning. And the loss of life and the effect that it will have on so many is something that I will never forget. Please let us have a moment of silence. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we ask for your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Amen.
I'd like to call for an approval of the minutes for last commission meeting. Can I have a motion? Second, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that may come before the City Commission, we ask that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening quietly to each person speaking, and that everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts, in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly Section 74-21 decorum, shall be barred from further appearances before the commission. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to one three-minute comment per item. If you exceed the three-minute allotment, the chair will advise you to finish your comment. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or you don't cease to speak after one warning, you will be escorted out of the chambers. There are a few changes to the agenda as follows. We're hearing Item 12A, the discussion regarding Legislative Advocacy Group before 5A. We're deferring Item 6A, balcony enclosure zoning application, and deferring Item 12B, discussion regarding the Heritage Park Recreation Center. And we have three add-on items. Item 5E, proclamation for World Day Against Trafficking. 5F, proclamation presented for Senior Citizens Day. Do I hear a motion to approve these changes?
I'm sorry, ma'am, one more thing, and also the police new hire.
Ah, the police hires and promotions. What item is that? Under 5G? 5G? Okay, 5G. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to take the first special employee recognition.
No, ma'am, it's the advocacy.
The advocacy, the Legislative Advocacy Group. Okay. Do we have a vice mayor in court?
Thank you. So this is a discussion item to, just to, you know, make everybody aware of what this idea is, and hopefully, you know, the residents would be interested. Following the completion of the Residence Academy, several of the students came up to me and were like, "Well, you know, what's next?". You know, they learned how government works, they wanted to continue to stay engaged, and we didn't have that "what next?". And I'd been thinking about this for a while, but I didn't know what it would look like. So I ended up speaking with Scott Dudley, I'm pointing over there because he's on the phone over there with Mauricio. And the Florida League of Cities has a program that is intended to help residents and municipalities, or anybody who's interested in getting involved with supporting or opposing legislation that, you know, that benefits or hurts our city. So before I go into any more detail, I think let's bring on Mr. Dudley on the line so he can explain how that works, and I can then tell you what our ideas are for developing that in the fall.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes. I had a hard time hearing the vice mayor, but I got the gist of it, so. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So first of all, Mayor, and members of the council, I want to thank you for your public service to the mayor, vice mayor, all the members of the council, and all the staff. Thank you for what you do for the citizens of your city and for the citizens of the state. You guys are where the rubber meets the road in terms of having a real impact on people's lives, and we appreciate it here at the Florida League of Cities. We're grateful to you very much. I want to talk briefly, if I could, about a program that the league is creating called Local Voices United, and it's an effort to try to, it's a grassroots community, to try to empower Floridians to speak up in support of local self-government, also known as home rule. We, of course, count on you all as members, as elected officials, to help us in our advocacy efforts, but we need to grow the army, and the Local Voices United effort is to try to grow that advocacy army and to try to include citizens from your local garden club, or your local neighborhood associations, or your Lions Club, or the library club, or whatever it is, trying to get them more involved as grassroots advocates. Grassroots is really about trying to bring people in that might not otherwise be engaged in what you're trying to do, and so we're trying to give, make it really simple for folks to get involved in the legislative effort by keeping them abreast of what's going on in real time. If there's a bill coming up that's going to affect them, then we try to make sure that they know what's going to happen with that bill, you know, when it's up, what the expected outcome is. We try to make sure that they understand the arguments for and the arguments against, so we try to educate them, and then we make it really easy for them to engage by including a list of the committee members' emails and how to do outreach to them, and so we're just trying to make it really, really simple for citizens to get engaged in the legislative process. And we hope that, I hope that I get a chance to come to your city and talk to some citizen groups. If any of you on the council is involved in any group, library group, like I said, Lions Club, Oaks Club, whatever it is, your local chamber, I travel the state, that's what I do, is I talk to groups and try to make sure that they understand that they have a voice and that they need to be using it to fight for the ability to have the legislature keep their noses out of decision-making. As you know, better than most, Sunny Isles isn't St. Augustine or Sanibel. One size does not fit all, and so you all and your citizens need to decide what's best for your community, and this effort is intended to help give those folks a voice in having a say in their own communities. And that's a really brief description of it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, and just to clarify, Mr. Dudley, this is Jennifer Viscara. You're basically providing the package, right? The emails, the contacts, and the timing of it, right? Like when we should reach out to people? That you would assist us with that structure?
Yes, that's exactly correct. We're trying to make it a one-stop shop for you all to plug in citizen groups into understanding what's going on. A lot of times I hear from citizen groups, "Wow, we didn't even know that was happening", so what we're going to just try to do is keep them informed about two or three really important issues that really matter, that are going to affect their lives, whether it's vacation rentals, or whether it's home-based business, or whatever the issue is, and try to make it really simple and do a one-stop shop for you all to be able to plug your citizens into this group and get them involved.
And you would provide training for us initially?
Yes, ma'am. We're happy to provide training, and like I said, I'm happy to come talk to any of those groups individually. That is my job to go around the state and talk about this, so I'd be happy to come train them, talk to them why it's important that they get involved, and try to let them know why it's really going to be very easy for them to be involved.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I think it's great.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Dudley.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for your time. Appreciate what you're doing. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. And so just to wrap it up, we're still, you know, first, people are going to need to show interest, they're going to need to show up, and we'll get the training. Senator Pizzo has also expressed interest in giving a little civics class to explain to us how government works, you know, locally and how it spreads out, the state, federal, et cetera. We can use their platform to attack the home rule issues, but also we can learn, we can use the same tactics to address things that are not home rule that are important to us. Again, I've spoken to Senator Pizzo, so if he reintroduces, or when he reintroduces the Anthony Resnick Act, we can use the same tools to help support that legislation from the beginning, not when it's already in the second committee, and the same thing, for example, with FDOT. We can create an FDOT group to be on top of them, to make sure that they're addressing and bring attention to the issues that are important to us. And the best way to do that is for people to get involved, and we can put things on Facebook, and that's good, but we can also have a structured, methodical approach to making our voices heard with the decision-makers, so that they can consider our voice before they cast their vote. So that's the idea, so we'll see how it goes.
I'm certainly very much a proponent of that. There is a specific type of legislation that I'm very much interested in seeing real grassroots and real citizen support, and that's for speeding light cameras. I think that dovetails very nicely into the objectives of the city, the administration, the MAPSAC, and so forth, to be able to implement speeding light cameras. That's a state senator who's a proponent of that, Anna Maria Rodriguez, and that's something that would really greatly augment our, you know, our traffic enforcement in our city and other cities around, so. Thank you.
And I just want to add one more thing. This is a good opportunity for the graduates of the Residence Academy to take leadership positions, as you know, you'll be a little bit more informed of how we work as a city, and so I look forward, I hope some of you guys come back and help us be like subcommittee leaders, depending on the topic that we decide to take on.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, next item. I want to acknowledge the Honorable Mitchell Kinzer, who's here in our audience and has very kindly come to our city. I want to acknowledge him and also that he took the time to write to me personally to really recognize over and above and beyond of one of our own staff, one of our own employees. So I'd just like to read this letter. Dear Mayor Goldman, I would like to commend one of your employees, Gerardo Guerrero. Today, when I arrived home to Surfside, I realized I was missing my wallet. I was frantically trying to local it when there was a knock on my front door. Standing there was Mr. Guerrero. He had found my wallet and was returning it to me. Not only was everything intact, but all he would accept was my thanks. Your city is truly fortunate to have an employee of this caliber working for you. Any recognition of his exemplary actions would be greatly appreciated. So thank you so much, and we have this special certification. I want to bring Mr. Kinzer up to the podium, and I want to thank you for really taking the time to recognize an over and above act of one of our own, so thank you.
It was my pleasure, and you know, working in the city when you have a number of employees, it's very difficult when you have people that really are exceptional, and I think they should be recognized as, you know, it's very easy to be lost in a city, big size, and I used to work right up the street at the school, and it's a great city. I enjoyed working here. I'm now retired, and it's very unusual to find people today that do the right thing and have that moral compass. So I'm glad that the city, and you especially, have taken the time to recognize him, because he did go above and beyond, and that should be an example, especially to the younger generation. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Guerrero? Above and beyond. We'd like to acknowledge and give you a little gift of our appreciation also. Everybody can come take a picture? Here it is. Go ahead.
I can present it?
Here, okay. Certificate of Appreciation to Gerardo Guerrero on July 21, 2022, in recognition of your outstanding dedication and commitment to the City of Sunny Isles Beach's principles and values. Thank you. We have now the certificates of acknowledgement for girls volleyball team.
So, welcome, girls. It's very nice to see you again here. These girls, the SIB Select Team, they were champions, they were North District Champions, and when they were here, I talked about their grit, their tenacity, their passion, so that passion, that tenacity, that grit, took them all the way to Orlando, to the AAU National Championships, where they won their division, so very happy that we are here celebrating you again. You know, be proud of yourselves. Also, I want to thank the coaches, you know, without their guidance, you know, they would have made it there, but obviously, you know, you gave them that extra push because it was not easy, you know, it started a little bit rough, you know, rough and tumble, but you know, you have that passion, you have that, you know, power inside of you, and you brought that out. And, you know, second day got better, third day, you won all your games, I believe, so it was very, very emotional to see that, the back and forth, you know, so pat yourself on the back, be proud, keep fighting, keep playing, keep playing hard and practicing. And I also want to thank and recognize the parents, because it's not easy. I mean, I can't imagine, I was tired up there, you know, we're not playing, we're just sitting there watching, and just the, you know, the emotions, you know, the emotional drain of watching these games, I can't imagine you being there on the court and actually having to, you know, play and go through those, you know, those rough times and, you know, those emotions. So thank you very much. You know, also, it's, I believe that you're going to continue, so please continue to practice and play hard, and just want to read here exactly what you want. So they went into the AAU Junior National Volleyball Championship in Orlando in, it was mid-June, something like that, and their division was the 14-under aspire, where they won the aquamarine division, and the coaches are Sherrell. Thank you very much, Sherrell. Yeah, nice smile, thank you. You should be smiling. Also want to thank Flavia, okay, Coach Flavia, thank you very much, and Coach Mariana as well. And then for the players, Sherrell, raise your hand, Sherrell. Or Sherrell, Sherrell's not here, okay. Naya, Naya, raise your hand, there you go. Jazz hands, go ahead. And then Izzy's, thank you very much, thank you very much, making Sunny Isles Beach proud. Bianca Lama, yeah, there you go. Bruna, Bruna's not here. Oh, there's Bruna, hey, Bruna. Yeah, thank you very much, yeah. Great. Then Julia, there you go, Julia, following in your dad's footsteps, yeah, both of you getting recognized, that's awesome. Then Victoria, there you go, bravo. And where's Emma? I saw her, oh, there's Emma, okay, Emma, yeah. Don't be shy, raise your hand, ah, yeah. So thank you very much, ladies, and we have some certificates here for you.
Yeah, and if you want for the...
So, would you like to step up? Introduce yourself?
Thank you, Mayor Goldman, Mrs. Vice Mayor, and the entire commission. Thank you for inviting me up to speak. Thank you for letting me lead the pledge, I was not expecting that. You caught me by surprise. My name is Renier Diaz de la Portilla. I am running for county court judge. I have practiced law as a Florida bar licensed attorney for 16 years, and actually, one of my first clients was the Florida League of Cities. I remember that now, when I heard your representative speak up there. I worked for a firm called Gray Robinson, right out of law school, and they had the contract back then, and I don't know if they still do, and so I worked the entire state of Florida, representing cities, many local cities here in Dade County, but also cities like the city of Orlando and other municipalities throughout the state of Florida. So I've always been a big lover of local government, a believer that the government that is closest to the people governs best, and as a judge, I will always, always understand that it's you folks who write the laws, the ordinances, and it's the judges who have to apply it and follow that law. That's all I'm going to say. I've been all over the county, it's been a long day, I'm on my way to Florida City, so from the northernmost point to the southernmost point, thank you, Madam Mayor and the rest of the commission for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the, you want to do the police recognition?
The Little League.
Or you want to do MAPSAC?
No, the North Miami Beach Little League, Mayor.
The, oh.
Yes, so 5C.
Ah, the North Miami Beach Little League, ah, the Little League. Okay, presentation.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Council, thank you for allowing us to come today. I actually just was elected as the president of North Miami Beach Little League, so we wanted to come, I've been a part of the board the last couple of years, a coach, as well as Arielle Sella, and we just wanted to come and say thank you for allowing us to use the Pelican field and as well as, you know, your children to come play in our league, and so we really appreciate the opportunity to do that. And then I do want to give a special thanks to Nick Regstrom, who has been instrumental in helping us, you know, get on Pelican, getting the kids out, getting us on in and out of the field. And then, so we are North Miami Beach Little League in name, but encompasses so much more of the cities around here. Our boundaries are really big for a Little League, and so with that being the case, Arielle Sella is a resident here in Sunny Isles Beach, and so I also want to give him the opportunity to come up and talk and just talk about the impact of having a city like Sunny Isles Beach in our Little League boundaries, so.
Thanks, Brandon. Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the time. First off, we did want to bring this plaque, show appreciation for our 2022 season that we'd like to present to the city. We also have one of our players here. This is Arielle Sella. He's a North Miami Beach Little League player and a Sunny Isles Beach resident, attends K-38 over here at a club. A few things, and also I also want to personally thank Nick. Nick Regstrom's been absolutely amazing working with us, him and his entire staff. So Nick, thank you. I know you don't want any attention, but we're going to give you some. So a couple things for you guys just to know, as Brandon said, we're only North Miami Beach Little League in name. It's something that's antiquated, and we're kind of stuck with it, but our area actually covers all of North Dade County. That being said, during... COVID, we saw a significant reduction in not only participants, but fields that were available to us for our program. Unfortunately, baseball in South Florida competes with other sports that might be a little more popular, especially in this area. And because of that, you know, we don't get the field access that we truly need to support all of our players. I'm happy to say that in the two years since Brandon and I have joined the Board, we have not only started to recover to the type of participants and numbers that we've had pre-COVID, but we've tripled the number of participants just from Sunny Isles Beach. Sunny Isles Beach participants make up almost 45% of our league players today, which is awesome and amazing. And the premier field that we use, the best field that's available to us now, is Pelican. So we really, really appreciate the city's participation, their allowance, their tolerance for us. And we only look to, you know, continue building on that relationship with you guys.
Maybe a name change is...
So, we actually are working on, we're actually working on a name change. I don't think you're going to want to be called the Sunny Isles Beach Little League, I'm just letting you know. Because then you're going to have to work with Williamsport. So, but it, we are, we're actively reconsidering the name of the Little League. So, again, this plaque's for you guys. We also have some plaques from prior seasons that we did want to present to you guys, but I didn't want to come up here and like, hold nine plaques and try to speak at the same time. So, you know, if I may, I'd like to give this to the Mayor, if that's okay.
Well, thank you. Will we take a picture?
Let's take a picture.
Think you'll come up for a picture, please?
Come on, Nick.
You can take him a picture.
Sports, sports, sports. Okay, um, do the police, yeah, let's, let's do the, yeah. The police of recognition?
Yes.
Next item. Chief?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, and Mr. Manager. So, this is a special night, because we're going to be introducing some new hiries, some new officers, new communication officers, and some recently promoted officers. And again, everybody, this would not have happened without the support of the Mayor, Commission, and city staff. So, very happy. First, I would like to introduce Tonisha Rowe. She comes from Miami Gardens Police Department with almost 15, almost 15 years of law enforcement communications experience. Tonisha, come up, please. We're very lucky to have her, so welcome aboard.
Welcome, welcome.
I want to get everybody... So, the next two I want to introduce are our newly hired Police Officer Cadets. First one is Tyler Hibbard. Previously worked as a lead photographer for Foxmore Photography. Foxmore Photography is the photographers actually takes pictures of all the kids from kindergarten up to high school. So, come on down. Next cadet is Emilio Exposito. He previously worked for the Miami Dade County School Board as a high school teacher for 11 years, and his specialty was actually teaching autistic kids. Come on down. Next, I want to introduce our newly hired Certified Police Officer, Officer Johnny Pinero. He comes to us from the North Miami Beach Police Department with almost four years of law enforcement experience. Excited to have him, and he's already immediately made an impact. Thank you, come on down.
Big job.
So, before I recognize the next group, who are newly recently promoted sergeants, I'd like to also recognize someone in the audience tonight. Very happy to see him, honored to be here, is retired Sergeant Blake Royal. Happy to have you here. So first, I want to introduce, as of June 12, 2022, following promotions were made from Corporal to Sergeant. First one was Sergeant Rob Ostrov. Second is Sergeant Bill Howell. The third is Sergeant Tom Philpart. And lastly, he's unable to attend tonight, he's actually on vacation. Is, I just want to recognize him also, well deserved, is Sergeant Lyle Agins. If you don't mind, I would like to maybe have their better halves come up in the picture and take one big group shot. And one, one last small presentation. This couldn't have been possible without the help of our Human Resources Department, Yael Adano, come on down. Also, David Blanco, come on down. So, this is for the whole Human Resource Team for their office. It says, "The Chief's Award Presented by Me to the Human Resources Team for Your Contribution, Dedication in Assisting the Police Department, June 2022." And this one is actually for Yael herself. It says the same thing, just a smaller version.
Well deserved, well deserved.
Mayor. Chief, Mayor, if I can, I just wanted to also point out, I'm going to ask you all to take a picture with both David and Yael. But, something that was paramount when I started, and under direction of you, was that public safety was number one. And I wanted to point out specifically through the help of the Chief, but more specifically, it was Yael's idea that we offer the sign-on bonus. And because of that, we've been able to hire seven new officers and two communications dispatchers. So it's crucial for our residents, and based on your direction. So, I'd like to ask you to go down and take a photo with her, please. And thank you to David, Chief.
And a special recognition to Lisabria.
City, family, community. That's how it's done. Well done, well done, to all, well done. Okay, next item. Thank you to all, and thank you to our wonderful Police Department and our, thank you for being here, and thank you for being part of our wonderful city. Thank you. Okay, item five D, patiently waiting. Want to recognize our Chair of our MAPSAC and our dedicated committee members, Pavel, Anastasia, Ken Percy, Mariana. Thank you so much for your service and all your work and dedication to get to the, to get to where we are today. Thank you.
All right. May I begin? Honorable Mayor Goldman, Honorable Mayor Escara, Commissioners, City Staff, Public Attendees. My name is Pavel Stoyev. I'm the Chair of the Mobility and Pedestrian Safety Committee. I'm here to provide a midterm update on our work, on our ideas. With me here today is Anastasia Ponfilova, Mr. Kenneth Percy, Ms. Mariana Tolejewski, and Ms. Aviva Halpert. She's not here today, but she's a very active participant of MAPSAC. I have a presentation, which is a summary of a memo, of a report, which I hope you had a chance to review. Before I get into the details, I'd like to once again acknowledge the tragedy that occurred recently in our streets. And I'd like to say that we must not forget about the tragedies that happened previously. This is a call to action, certainly, for all of us. It seems like these kind of events are happening more often in our city. But the situation is actually not unique to Sunny Isles Beach. In an article by Miami Herald, just recently, July 13, Florida has been rated the second deadliest state for pedestrians in this study. And they call it an epidemic. And I suppose this is because a lot of people are moving to Florida, and to South Florida in particular, and to the city of Sunny Isles Beach. They're moving from other states internationally. We have a lot more residents, we have a lot more traffic. But we have ideas, we have suggestions and priorities that we'd like to present today for you to consider, for you to discuss and to consider implementation. And before I get into that, I'd like to say that inasmuch as we may be limited by FDOT or other jurisdictions in implementing, you know, these improvements that we came up with, we must not be limited by our eagerness and by our openness towards this, these ideas that we have. With that in mind, I'd like to show this quick video, which is actually was taken by one of the residents, recently, and posted online. And it shows a group of young ladies running across Collins Avenue, right in front of the bus and all the other traffic. Obviously, you know, green light for traffic and red light for them, but they're still doing it. Our ideas, which we like to present and which we proposed in the report to you, address some of these situations. Situations like this, similar situations, address traffic flow improvements, address pedestrian safety, address other traffic events. Our mission and our priorities are to promote traffic and pedestrian safety as part of our MAPSAC Committee. We generate and we discuss these ideas for improving traffic flow in our city. We're a think tank. We're coming up with ideas, priorities, and we discuss them in detail, and we bring them to you. And we're residents, living here full-time, so we have firsthand knowledge of what's going on. And we volunteer our time for this important initiative. I'd like to cover our approach a little bit, just so that you have an understanding of how we arrived to the report which we provided to you. First of all, we assessed the existing conditions. We looked at the existing reports and studies, going all the way back to the 2006 Sunny Isles Beach Transportation Master Plan. We looked at the most recent pedestrian safety and mobility study, which was prepared by Traffic Tech Engineering. We had great input and answers provided to us by the Chief of Police, thank you very much, as well as by Sunny Isles Beach staff, in answering some of our detailed questions. As well as, we have local knowledge ourselves of the city. We had Ken, for example, going out there and safely, you know, measuring the width of the lane, so that we can discuss that as part of our committee. So we personally visited and examined some of the locations. We generated results, a list of ideas and priorities addressing traffic safety, pedestrian safety, traffic flow, visibility of some of the safety measures, nearly 34 of them. We then agreed to rate these priorities such that each member of our committee has equal input towards them. And then, we also allocated a provision for input by the city staff, because you may have some of the more intrinsic knowledge about certain, certain conditions or certain risks toward the, that may be impacting these ideas that we are presenting. We generated the detailed report, which you should have. And then we also found that some, a lot of our ideas, a lot of our priorities that we came up with, is actually supported by and formalized within an international Vision Zero Framework. Vision Zero Framework addresses safety of the system, safety of the mobility within cities. It was first pioneered in Europe, but it's gaining significant traction in North America as well, particularly cities like Fort Lauderdale, Los Angeles, Boston, and Massachusetts, they're adopting Vision Zero Framework, which looks at system-specific planning and policy, supported by individual awareness of the road users, be those driver, driving, walking, or biking, or using scooters. But we all know that, you know, users, pedestrians and drivers, they make mistakes. It's a human nature. And so that there are conditions, systems-based conditions in the, in the city that sort of provide the safety net and try to minimize the impact of such mistakes. This is a brief overview of our rating system. As you can see, these are all 30 or so priorities and recommendations which we put together. And the chart is showing a ranking of them. The blue ones are the ones that we're not presenting today to you, but they're still on the list. And there are some still good ideas in there. The reason we're not presenting them today is because they receive the lower ranking, as opposed to the orange ones. There are several ideas which we're presenting, which were actually ranked lower. But the reason for them appearing today in our presentation is because we allowed for sort of a wild card, for a priority or idea to be placed on the presentation list today by any of our members, if they felt... if they felt it was an important situation to them, something they really wanted to have on the list. And so, in order of priority, I'm not going to cover it in detail, of course, you have in the report, but the pedestrian and traffic safety priorities listed from 1 to 13, some of them ended up being grouped because we felt they are related in nature and could be considered jointly. For example, improvements at crosswalks, bright crosswalks, you know, 3D painted crosswalks, that all goes in, you know, together, as well as looking at protection of pedestrians on the sidewalks, that's also been grouped together. But I'd like to give you an idea of, you know, some of the, using some of these visuals of, you know, what could be done. For example, when looking at the crossings, at pedestrian crossings, we can implement glowing crosswalks and bright color crosswalks, so that it's more visible to the drivers, it's more visible to the users, the pedestrians. And the idea here is not only it would, you know, make it easier and encourage pedestrians to use the crossings in a proper way, it'll actually add some, you know, beauty to our streets. One of the other priorities we ranked, we came up with and ranked, scrambled intersections, which allow to entirely separate traffic vehicle movements from pedestrian movements with appropriate timing and the lights and appropriate markings on the road surfaces. These have been implemented in various other cities, including other coastal cities in the United States, and quite successfully so. We also considered implementations on adding overhead and surface level flashing lights to crosswalks, very similar to how it's been done quite successfully at North Bay Road already, at the little bridge there. Camera-based traffic enforcement, not only speeding, red light cameras, but also, you know, some of the newer modern systems, camera-based systems, would allow to automate other kinds of traffic infractions, thereby taking, you know, the manual effort required by the police force to improve, you know, catching of these infractions. But not only that, they would allow their police force to have complete real-time situational awareness of, you know, what's going on with traffic in the city without having them, you know, being physically present there, as they can literally, you know, view that video in real-time on their mobile devices that are part of their operations. Protected bike and scooter lanes, as an idea we rated at number seven, and it's actually been implemented in Miami Beach using installation of the so-called armadillo-type lane separators. So not only the bike lane or scooter lane is painted, but also these little concrete armadillos are there to protect the bike or scooter lane. Planters to protect the sidewalk, of course, this would be, this will need careful consideration by the city staff, we understand there are certain restrictions to that idea. I would like to, first of all, thank you, before I take any questions, thank you for establishing MAPSAC and allowing us to come up with these ideas. I'd like to thank my fellow committee members for their great participation, idea generation, a very thoughtful discussion. And also, I'd like to thank our city staff in, you know, supporting and managing this process for us and helping us be more useful and productive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Do they hold up traffic more, the scrambled crosswalks?
Anastasia, would you like to answer that one? All right. Well, our understanding, again, we're not experts in urban, you know, traffic design. Our understanding is they do. The light turns red for everyone, and the pedestrians are allowed to cross in any direction while staying, you know, in their painted crosswalk sort of laneways. And then the light turns green for traffic in one way, then turns green for traffic in the other way. This completely separates the pedestrian and vehicular traffic from each other.
What if you haven't had pedestrians leave the crosswalk yet?
If pedestrians leave crosswalk?
If they haven't left the crosswalk yet. But the light changes.
All I can say, again, I'm not an expert in this design, but all I can say, this has been implemented quite successfully in various municipalities.
Okay. So when someone investigated it in order that you had it on the screen?
Correct.
So there's no clear answer?
Can we follow up with you on that one?
I actually, I have a perfect place in mind for our first Dutch scramble crosswalk, so thank you. It's high on my priority list, actually, so thank you. I like it a lot. The Dutch scramble's been very, very effective, and there's some very ideal locations in the city for that, for the implementation of that.
We can certainly provide, you know, technical support to that by, you know, pulling it up from whichever reputable sources are available in support of scramble.
There's plenty of supporting data. It's being implemented, I'm not sure what your question actually is.
My question was, you have the light is red, and you have all of these people, according to the picture, crossing the street all haphazard ways.
Not haphazard, I mean, it's basically, it's a four-way, it's a four-way crosswalk. I mean, I think these questions are more directed towards a traffic engineer, but it's my, yeah, but Jerry, they're not, these are ideas, there's not, they didn't work with a specific traffic engineer, but I certainly think this has been very successfully implemented in a multitude of jurisdictions. It's not, it's not like they're coming up with a, something that's, you know, it's not a proof of concept.
But we had a committee that put time into this, brought us a representation, but they don't know enough about it.
I don't, I'm not sure that's the purpose, but go ahead, Susan. Susan?
I just wanted to add that when we met with FDOT in, I think it was February, we did mention the Dutch scramble crosswalk to them. They were receptive. They said, you know, they are interested in the flow of traffic, but they did say that they would consider it for only one intersection for our two-and-a-half-mile length of road.
Right, and there is something, I think, of great interest, you know, for that particular rendition. But again, you know, thank you for, you know, putting that together, because it's definitely a very successful, it's a very successful concept, and...
I was just more interested in how it worked, but no one seems to be able to explain how it works.
And the cars, these cars stop, and then there's a full pedestrian flow from all directions. That's correct. Right.
And then you have people crossing as to the numbered flashing numbers. And then the light turns green. And if people have not, you know, gotten onto the curb, the cars begin to go.
So...
Like any other intersection.
Susan?
Using 174th Street and Collins Avenue as an example?
That's a perfect example.
Yes, right now, you know, when it turns red for the Collins Avenue north-south is when people can cross east and west. But then that same person has to wait and cross north or south, across 174th, when the other light changes. So, and then...
So this way, they'd be able to walk diagonal?
They can walk diagonal, so it gets them there quicker, and then the traffic going eastbound on 174th that wants to turn left or right...
Because you have a further distance, it has to account for more time as well.
And the street is marked. It's marked in such a way that they can, that...
Because anyone who knows triangles...
It may, but right now...
When you're walking diagonal, it takes more time.
But right now, 174th traffic has to wait for pedestrians going east and west when their light turns green. That would be eliminated, that problem would be eliminated with a scramble.
That's a...
It's just going to lead to frustrated drivers as well.
Well, it's, again, you know, there are examples literally all over probably the world of this being very successfully implemented, so we would, you know, if FDOT is receptive and there's one location that's really ideal for this, which we have in mind...
And they require a study, and part of that study would be the impact of traffic before they would approve it.
Right, it's not like, you know, it's going to be engineered and vetted. Yes, that's the location. That's absolutely the location.
If they're willing to give it a go, let's try.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I know that this, some of these are, you know, being discussed, vetted, and implemented by Paul Abbott as well, so there's definitely a level of consensus or conformance with many of these, and I think this really, this gives us excellent data and excellent, you know, place to, a baseline to work with. So thank you very much for all the work and the effort. Thank you. And we're also, just, we talked a little bit, I know internally, about Vision Zero. I think that's something that, you know, the city has been involved in historically and with interest, and this is probably a fruitful area for the committee going forward to really embrace and talk about how we might be able to, you know, fully, you know, further implement the Vision Zero concept and, you know, so forth. So thank you for bringing that up.
We definitely found support in Vision Zero framework to what we're doing as part of the committee, and now we'll have that ability to rely on that formal framework and formal implementation process in furthering our mission of the MAPSAC.
Thank you. Excellent, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, you have a, we have a speaker's card. Yes, you got three speakers' cards.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioner. I just have, my address also?
Yes, name, state your name and address.
My address is 17500, North Bay Road, Sunny Isles. I just have one question. Why was pedestrian bridges so low on the list for the committee? Because I think that crossing a pedestrian bridge will reduce chances of being hit by a car to zero, and I know you can't have one at every intersection, but I think at some specific intersections, it might be useful to cross, and that is my question.
Thank you. If you want to.
Thank you. David, great question. I really like to say that, you know, when we considered, pedestrian bridge was there, we did not throw out any ideas, we literally took everything we could come up with, but then through a formal rating process, ranking process, which you have a record of, each one of the members of our committee was able to submit their, you know, 1 to 10, and how they felt about it. And it's just, I think, naturally happened so that pedestrian bridges, and some of us had ideas, you know, in support and favor of pedestrian bridges, and others felt quite strongly in opposition to it, because, you know, some of us felt it was, it would be sort of a waste of our money and other things, a lot more other things could be done for a lot less, a lot other improvements. And so the pedestrian bridges ended up still on the list, they're still on the table, nothing is being thrown out, they're still there as one of our ideas, but just naturally through the rating and ranking process, they ended up being lower on the list, and none of the members in the committee felt like they would use their wild card to bring it back into the list.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have no further speaker comments or speaker items on that, so we're ready to move on to the next item, five E.
Five E is the proclamation regarding World Trafficking Day. Do you want me to read? Okay, give me one second.
Okay. Whereas an estimated 40 million men, women, and children worldwide are victims of different forms of human trafficking, and whereas human trafficking is an assault on human dignity affecting people all around the world, and through coercion and force, human trafficking deprives millions of victims of their unalignedable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and often referred to as modern slavery, this blight in society involves forced and involuntary labor or sex, and affects people of all ages, genders, races, religions, and nationalities. And this evil undermines the rule of law, robs millions of their dignity and freedom, enriches transnational criminals and terrorists, and threatens public safety and national security everywhere. And whereas, like the United States, many countries around the world have worked to implement the three Ps: paradigm of prosecution traffickers, protecting victims, and preventing the crime through the passage and implementation of national anti-trafficking laws. And whereas the city of Sunny Isles Beach reaffirms its commitment to continue to raise awareness in the hope of eradicating this evil to support victims and survivors, and to hold traffickers accountable for their heinous crimes. Now, therefore, the City Commission of the Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, hereby proclaims July 30, 2022, as World Day Against Trafficking in Persons, in the city of Sunny Isles Beach. This morning, I spoke with Kathy Fernandez, our state attorney. She was going to be here to get the proclamation, but she have a previous commitment. She was very happy that we are doing this, and as soon as next time that we see her, I would like to give her the proclamation. But I want to share also some data. In human trafficking, Florida ranks number three in the nation. Miami-Dade is number one in Florida. Forced labor and human trafficking is $150 billion worldwide industry, and at least a $32 billion industry in the U.S. And lastly, data shows that in the United States, approximately 40% of sex trafficking victims are recruited online, making the internet the most commonplace where recruitment takes place. So that's a World Day for Human Trafficking to Raise Awareness, and that's the idea of the proclamation. Any comments?
Thank you for bringing this important issue, thank you, to the dais. Okay. Item five F.
Five F is the Social Seniors.
Okay.
Excuse me, the Senior Citizens Day. Do you want me to read that one, Commissioner? Okay, so the next proclamation reads, "Whereas National Senior Citizens Day is observed annually on August 21st to recognize the positive contributions senior citizens make in communities across the United States, and also to bring awareness of social, health, and economic issues that affect senior citizens. And whereas throughout our history, older people have achieved much for our families, our communities, and our country, and whereas with improved healthcare and more gears of productivity, older citizens are reinforcing their historical role as leaders and as links with our patrimony and sense of purpose as individuals and as a nation. And whereas many older people embark on second careers, giving younger Americans a fine example of responsibility, resourcefulness, competence, and determination, millions of senior citizens are serving as volunteers in various programs and projects that benefit every sector of society. And whereas for all they have achieved throughout their life, and for all the continued accomplishments, we owe older citizens our thanks and a heartfelt salute. And whereas we can best demonstrate our gratitude and esteem by making sure that the Sunny Isles Beach community is a great place in which to mature and grow older, a place in which older people can participate to the fullest, and can find encouragement, acceptance, assistance, and services they need to continue to lead lives of independence and dignity. Now, therefore, this is the commission of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, do hereby proclaim August 21, 2022, as National Senior Day in the city of Sunny Isles Beach."
We'd like to present this to Dennis Stubble. All right. Let's picture. You too?
Thank you.
Do you have any pictures, any, any photographer?
I provide.
Any pictures, anything? Perfect. Thank you.
I mean to say that, on behalf of the social citizens of Southeast Florida.
Just add two words, just so much.
We want to say, we want to make the Vice Mayor and Commissioners, uh, for the special day.
Say it again.
Oh, say it again. Thank you. So on, on behalf of the social citizens of Southeast Florida, we would like to thank the mayor, the vice mayor, and the commissioners for this special proclamation for the seniors. This is very nice that, that you guys have done something like this. We really appreciate it, and thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Okay.
So, talking about senior citizens, we had talked about this in previous commission meetings. So we're going to be implementing, as a city, we're going to be implementing the Senior Roundtable. And our first Senior Roundtable is going to be next Wednesday at Gateway Center from 12 to 1:00 p.m., okay? So what, what is this? This is basically a forum where senior citizens can come. It's open to all senior citizens. You could come, talk about any ideas that you may have, any critiques that you may have about the city, complaints. We're used to taking complaints, but we're here to, you know, work together and solve those issues and make the city a better city. So that's why we're looking to have these senior citizens get together, talk about ideas, talk about different issues, and brainstorm. And we're going to have representatives from the city there to hear you out and see how we could implement some of the ideas coming out of the Senior Roundtable. So we're going to be doing this perhaps once a month, or once every two months, and we'll see how this one goes. It's going to be next week, Wednesday, from 12 to 1:00 p.m., and lunch will be served, so you don't have to worry about that. We just want you to come in, huh? Gateway Center, yeah.
That's July, July 26th.
Correct, yeah. Wednesday, July 26th, 12 to 1:00.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
Don't mess me up.
July 27. July 20, don't mess, okay. Don't mess you.
Our, our meeting team will be sending out a notice shortly.
We'll be sending out a notice, so, uh, yeah. Please spread the word and hope, hope to see you there.
Thank you so much. No, no committee, right? Just, just a forum?
No, it's not a committee. This is an open forum for people to come. And obviously, the idea here a little bit is that, you know, once we start getting people in there, I think that the leaders will emerge, and they'll, they, they have, let's say, the ability to, you know, kind of form, you know, who the leader is going to be. And if they want to organize themselves a certain way, they have that freedom to do so. Okay? So it's up to, to the people coming to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lama.
Thank you.
Okay, item 6A has been deferred. So we're on to item 7A, ordinances for the first reading. So item 7A.
7A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending ordinance number 2021-574, approving budget amendment number BA 2122-03 to the city's operating in capital improvement budget for the 2021-2022 fiscal year general fund, special revenue fund, capital projects fund, and stormwater capital fund, authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to implement the terms and conditions of this ordinance, providing for an effective date.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and distinguished guests, and city staff. This is the first reading for the budget amendment 2122-03. This is for the routine transfer of funds between departments to, to maintain the operational needs, as well as funding the capital projects throughout the city. Any questions?
Any questions? Any questions from the commission? I think we've, we've reviewed and so forth, so.
Understood.
I think we're, we're, we're good. Okay. We, do we have, we have no public speakers on this item?
Not for this one.
Okay. So that being said, unless we have any comments, questions, if we have a, a motion?
Yeah.
First? Second?
Taken.
All in favor? Do we have a voice, roll call vote? Okay.
Commissioner Joseph? Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuvason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading. Second reading will be scheduled for September 15th.
Okay. Item 7B.
7B is an ordinance of the City Commission of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 99 of the City of Sunny Isles Beach Code of Ordinances entitled Public Health and Safety, creating a new Article 5 within Chapter 99 of the code to be entitled prohibition of smoking at public beaches and pub, and park property, providing for prohibition of smoking at public beaches and park property, providing for definitions, providing for enforcement and penalties, amending the schedule of civil penalties and miscellaneous fees in Chapter 14 of the code, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. So as many know already, the governor signed into law legislation that effectively removes the state preemption on the ability for municipalities to regulate this type of activity, which is prohibiting smoking and, you know, litter and so forth of cigarettes on public property. So by peeling off that layer, it, it has now given an opportunity for the municipalities such as ours to basically prohibit or ban cigarettes and cigarette items on the, the public parks and, and the beaches. So I think we've had a lot of discussion about that previously, Commissioner Joseph in particular. It's pretty self-evident that cigarettes, not only the use of cigarettes in public spaces, it's not only a public hazard, but it really is an environmental, leaves an environmental condition where cigarette butts are picked up by kids, or, you know, the filters and so forth, and they get buried in the sand. I am a strong advocate of this type of regulation where we can basically preserve and protect not only the health of our residents, but the integrity of our public spaces and our beaches by prohibiting these cigarette items in those public spaces. So that's the, that is basically the history or the background for this particular ordinance. So there's a whole memorandum here, but I think it's pretty obvious to everyone that it's, smoking is hazardous to the health, and these butts contain chemicals and toxins, and it's a significant pollutant on our beaches, and they can wash into the ocean water. And I don't know about you, but I've, I've also had family members who have perished through, through lung cancer. So any way that we can clean up our beaches and, you know, clean up some of our public spaces, I'm certainly in favor of that. So with that being said, I don't, if we have any comments from the commission, Commissioner Joseph would like to start with that.
I'd just like to add that there's a prior statute in the states that, or it's smoking in indoor.
In indoor areas, there's a prior statute on the books that takes into account as well outdoor covered areas that are at least 50% covered, which encompasses all of the restaurants in Sunny Isles. It's just a matter of enforcement, which I will now proceed to have the state enforce their statute to the best of my ability.
Commissioner Lama?
No, no comments. I think, I mean, I think we're all in agreement. You know, with them and smoking, it's, it's hazardous for the health, and it's also very uncomfortable for those of us that don't smoke to be surrounded by this. Obviously, there's second half, second half, um, conditions that you're exposed to, but also it's not pleasant to, you know, be at a restaurant or be somewhere at the beach, you know, enjoying your day. And I would just, you know, I would tell that.
I would, I would, I would agree with that, and, and I think generally, anywhere where children are likely to be, parks, playgrounds, it's, it's air that we should protect, and, you know, so.
Should be clean air, yeah.
I, I agree. And I also think that this is a, like, like the perfect example of the, the home rule advocacy at its best, right? The, the Florida League of Cities made this a priority. It helped us get organized. We, we went to Tallahassee. We were there advocating for that. I know residents sent emails. We passed a proclamation. It went to the governor. Other municipalities did the same thing. And we got back a little bit of that power. We were not able to regulate this before, but now we can. And it's, it, you know, we didn't get here by magic. There was a lot of work that went into it, and now we're able to, to sit here and, you know, regulate smoking next to our playgrounds, which is important to us. Whereas maybe in a stadium, in, in, that may be considered a park in, in a different municipality, that's not something that they may want to do there. So it shows that sometimes in, you know, in cities, we know one size does not fit all. So it allows us to do what we have to do for our residents here, and allows other cities to manage what they have the way they need to do it. So 100% support it, and I think we, you know, we need to acknowledge, I think as a city, we, we did our part to push this to where we are today, so.
Commissioner Stavison?
Well, of course, I like it. And I just, the challenge is enforcement. So I really hope it gets enforced. Just like dogs in the beach, I hope they can do the same thing at the same time, and fight for that enforcement. That's what I want to see, the enforcement part of it working. So I know our chief of police is here, so that beach patrol, I hope they can work on that. Thank you.
Add it to the list.
Exactly. Sorry. Yes.
So that being the case, if we have a, a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve.
So moved. Second, second. All in favor? We have a, a voice, a vote, a roll call?
Roll call. Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuvason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading. Second reading is scheduled for September 15th.
Thank you. Item 7B is, that we just did 7B, 7C. 7C.
7C is an ordinance of the Commission of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 6 of the city of Sunny Isles Beach Code of Ordinances to provide for the establishment of a committee on the status of women, stating the purpose, powers, and duties of the committee, providing for limitations of power, providing for member qualifications, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date.
Okay. I will read the, the memorandum that's attached to this proposed ordinance. So with one minor adjustment to call this a commission as opposed to a committee, and that's consistent with the historic kind of, you know, overall purpose and reach of this. When John F. Kennedy established the Presidential Commission on the Status of Women in 1961, he charged Chairwoman Eleanor Roosevelt with the responsibility of assessing the economic and social status of women in the United States at that time. As a result of the research, the Presidential Report on American Women was published, which raised awareness about the discrimination and sexism American women experienced in most areas of their lives. The report also brought to light the inequalities between women and men in the political, legal, and civil sectors, finally placing the plight of women at the forefront of the American psyche. The report recommended that each state form a similar commission. Today, there are approximately 270 state, county, and local commissions for women located in the United States and its territories, including many in our midst. These commissions are advocates for equality and justice for women and serve their communities in a variety of ways, depending on the resources available. Locally, Miami-Dade County established a commission for women in 1971, and is one of the first women's commissions in Florida. Despite the progress that has been made, women continue to face numerous challenges, including but not limited to, lack of access to affordable housing and caregiving, economic insecurity, and health issues that are unique to women. In furtherance of its efforts to improve the well-being of women and families, the city wishes to create a commission on the status of women that shall make non-binding recommendations relating to matters affecting women in the city. So the ordinance is set forth here, and with that, I would like to call some of our public speakers who have some perspectives as to the various different commissions that have been formed and established in, in the, in the neighboring municipalities. So I'd like to call Emanuela Florimont first. Thank you for coming. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Councils, City Attorney, and the City Clerk, and also the public. My name is Emanuela Florimont. I am a CEO and President of MJD Wellness and Community Center, and I am one of the Women Board in the city, in the beautiful city of North Miami. And my address is 1151 Northwest 126th Street, North Miami, 33168. The reason why that we're here tonight, I'm not alone. I'm with two other council members. We're here to support that women committee. As a young immigrant and entrepreneur in the city of North Miami, women face a lot of challenges. So to empower women in any city, we need to reunite. The one that already burned needs to take the one that's, the starters to not go through the path that we, the one that burned, has to go. Like, for example, I burn a lot because after school, I start my own business, and the business grow, I have to face a lot of challenges. But I request in the city, every starter from age 18 and up who want to start a business, we're going to create educational, we, we, we create the educational for them, so they can know how to register the business, how to regulate all the paperwork, how to do everything. But to do that, we reunite with the chambers. We have North Miami Chamber of Commerce and the Haitian Chamber of Commerce. We reach out to them. So by next fiscal year, we're going to start that class for all business women that live in the city of North Miami. So if Sunny Isles has that committee, we will reunite it. Because if you look at the census of Sunny Isles, 81% of the person that live in the city are immigrant. If you look at it, yes, they are white, but they are coming from another country, not from America. So those women are looking for opportunity. So to empower women, we need one another, like the city sisters, to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I have another.
I have a question, please.
So the, wait, so the, so the interesting part is that you adapt your, whatever your provisions or whatever the, the commission to what the needs are of the community, and specifically to the needs of the women, or you model after what are the specific needs or objectives of the women?
My business per se, we have a clinic, a medical center, and a food pantry where people come all over Miami-Dade County to receive food or medical services. And I've been doing that for the past seven years, and I see the need of the community. And I also like a very, you know, familiar with everybody in my community, especially women. They have like, for example, I know a lady, she cooks very well, and she cooks at home. She always called me to eat. But I asked, Mommy, do you register your business? She said, no, I don't want to have a business because I don't, it's too much. But what you're doing is a business. You sell the food, even you, you're doing it at home. But it's a business. By educating her, now she's going to open her own restaurant. So we need to do it. We need to help the women because especially my community, which is the Haitian community and the Latinos community, they have a lack of experience of the system. community and the Latinos community, they have a lack of experience of the system. So if we take them, even on a Sunday, to educate them, it will be good for them and for the youngest women that are coming, that we can empower. Not respecting you guys, you know, empower, but in the professional way. But at home, we're still going to be the woman has got required, okay? So don't be scared of that.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We have another, we have another public, do you have a question for her? Okay, go ahead.
Yes. So you're, you are a committee that was established by what, the county?
We are established by the city of North Miami.
City of North Miami?
Yes.
Okay. And do you obtain funding from the city?
Now, no. But we are planning to raise our own money to help that committee, and request help from other sources, but the city per se doesn't allocate money until now for us, since it's the first time they have a Women Committee in the city.
Okay. So what type of services does your committee offer to women currently?
Like I said, we just, we just start. We plan to have a business workshop for the women, and I'm a physician in the psychology, so I love healthcare. And Dr. Magda and I, we're gonna also provide wellness services for women. For example, if a woman has problem, any behavioral problem, we will be able to assist them. And we have Dr. Maria Tien. She is a human trafficker. She will be also working with the woman who has trafficking. All of that will be a package in the wellness. And we have Nora. She's a photographer and businesswoman. We're going to empower women as we can. If we can't, we're going to go out looking for sources to help them out.
So one of the goals of this committee is to put an end to human trafficking?
No, no, no. One of the goal of the committee is to empower women in every aspect that we can. If we cannot, we will go out, look for referrals to help them out.
Okay. And what type of health services does your committee consider?
Like I said, we are two. Dr. Magda, which is an LCSW, and me, I'm an MD. So I have my own practice and a psychology. So we're going to provide behavioral health services and medical services to the women that are unable to afford those services.
So does your committee have any involvement in abortion services?
Abortion? This.
Jerry, 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 really. Jerry, this is really, Jerry.
It's okay, it's okay, let me.
No, we don't need to get there right now. This is not the venue to have this conversation.
It's not, this is a, this is a, Jerry, this is a committee on this, this is about a commission on this. This is about empowering women. This is not.
So could we eventually end up with abortion?
No, Jerry, 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 this is really, really Jerry.
No, it's okay. No, thank you.
It's not a, it's not a valid question. It's completely off topic.
We have another public speaker?
Yes. I'm sorry, Jerry, that's.
Dr. Etienne.
Thank you so much for coming out. Thank you. We have another public speaker, Dr. Marie Etienne.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, distinguished commissioners, staff. My name is Marie Etienne. I'm a professor of nursing from Miami-Dade College, Doctor of Nursing Practice. I'm also the President and CEO of Global Innovative Foundation, an organization that empowers survivors of crime, domestic violence, gun violence, and human trafficking. This evening, we're invited to speak on behalf of this ordinance as to whether or not you would consider having a commission of women in your beautiful city. And so as the Chairwoman, I'm here to simply state, on behalf of Councilwoman Mary Esteme Irvin, who was invited to be here this evening, she sends her regards and could not be here. However, I am the Chairwoman for the Commission of Women. I wanted to basically tell you that our commission was established by ordinance 1461 on January 26, 2021. Basically, we're here to serve as an advisory capacity by making studies, reports, and recommendations to the City Council and to the City Manager in respect to all matters pertaining to the status of all women in the city, including but not limited to the fair and equal treatment of women, those policies and practices which discriminate against women, whether practiced by the public or private persons, individuals or corporations in the public and private employment of women, the working and living conditions of women, the delivery of public and private services to women, the education and training of women in public accommodations for women. So to answer your question, sir, we're basically here to support the need to establish a commission of women, because we see that the need of your city, just like our sister city, we're here to listen to all women who have a voice, just to listen to what the needs are. And if you have a commission, the goal of the commission would be to speak with the community, listen to the community, and if there is a need for educational programs, if there's a need for any, any activities for the city of Sunny Isle, then the commission would make that recommendation to you, Madam Mayor and the council. We're here as an advisory council, basically to share, be a voice of what the city, all the women in your city would require. So I think, I think as, as a commission, you would benefit to have a commission of women, not only to empower, but also to hear from all of your citizens what the needs are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I just, thank you so much. I think you very eloquently stated really what the role and the capacity and the bandwidth is. I just wanted to reiterate. So the powers and duties of the committee include: to serve in an advisory capacity to the City Commission in respect to all matters pertaining to the status of women, and to make periodic reports and recommendations with respect to such matters; to make studies of existing city services and programs dealing with women or affecting women, and consider the future needs of this city with respect to such services and programs; to collaborate with organizations to raise awareness of the challenges and issues facing women and families of the city, and the resources available for assistance; to formulate and recommend plans and programs for the coordination of activities between the city and other governmental agencies or non-governmental agencies dealing with matters related to women; to serve as a medium to bring about understanding and solutions of the many complex problems involving the status of women in this city; to educate city residents by hosting educational forums and seminars on far-ranging women's issues; to accept donations and contributions from public and private sources; to accept grants on behalf of the city from foundations and others for the purpose of carrying out the above-listed functions, and to assist in the identification and recognition of contributions made by women of the city to the community, state, and nation, and all other matters assigned by the City Commission. That's probably pretty consistent with how it's, how it's implemented in your city, correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just to add that each of us are appointed by a council, men or councilwomen. So you would choose who you would like to appoint to be at your council. I'm not sure.
Yes, that's the second issue.
I'm not sure what the commission, how you do it, but technically, the people you choose to be part of this commission are people you value and trust, that they would do a great job for your city.
Please. So what you're, just continuing on what you're saying just now. So part of our agreeing to commission itself is to have a say in who might head the commission, correct?
Correct. I'm not sure how your city function. Again, Madam Mayor would probably entertain that conversation with all of you at your meetings. But for us, in the city of North Miami, the mayor and the councils appoint one person. And of course, as their term ends, then that person's term also ends, and of course, would be considered for reappointment.
But then, to continue further on what you were just saying, if the mayor has a certain person in mind that might not be suiting, but she's asking us to vote on the aspects of the committee, we would really need to know who the mayor has in mind.
Jerry, we're really, everybody, we have had a longstanding history of formation of committees, and we've had a longstanding history of appointments based upon ranking and tenure. So every commissioner gets their pick, or as the case may be, if it's a seven-person committee, then the vice mayor gets two picks, and the mayor gets two picks. So what we're here to decide today is whether or not we want to form this committee in the first place. We're really not talking about who's getting appointed. The idea.
Well, there's trickery here, and I'm not going for the trickery.
Okay, so I want to thank you so much for, you know, providing, you know, we're, we're, you're, Jerry, you're, Commissioner Joseph, you're certainly entitled to your perspective and your opinion. But what is in front of us today is whether or not we will form this, we agree as a commission body to form this particular committee, not who our pick is to run or to serve on the committee.
I understand.
Thank you, Dr. Etienne, for.
So thank you so much.
If we agree, or if it's by three to however many, and this committee goes forward, automatically the mayor's pick becomes the chairman, which I absolutely.
That's not how it works.
Well, yes, it is.
For us, in our city.
Yes, it is. That's how it works here.
Well, thank you, thank you so much for coming out. Clearly, there, this, these commissions, as they function, have served the greater good and the needs of the community in the same way that when we form MAPSAC and we agreed to form the ESAC, we have found, you know, these committees, you know, are a function of citizen engagement and participation and involvement. So, you know, I think it's up to us to really decide as a commission body.
And I wanted to say something. Thank you for being here. It's an honor to have you here. I know what your foundation does, and it's just amazing. Thank you for supporting this initiative, and we are honored that you are here with us today. Thank you, Dr. Etienne.
Thank you so much for being here.
We just here to support you, to let you know.
I appreciate your insight.
It's a great idea to have a commission.
Thank you, Dr. Etienne.
Thank you.
Whatever you need us to support, collaborate, the City of North Miami Commission of Women will consider that. Thank you.
And we, of course, we're also aware of the workings of the very successful commission in the city of North Miami Beach. And so, you know, we're hopeful that if, in fact, we approve this, that we will be in a position to collaborate and share ideas and best practices and so forth, and really to serve the community.
Madam Mayor, if you allow me, I do have one board member, one commissioner who's here with me. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Norissa Glickman, who also is part of the commission. I don't want to take any more of your time, but, you know, we took the time to come here to let you know that we believe in what we do to help the city. As we said, we're here simply as an advisory council for the city and mayor and council. And so whatever you need us to support you with, whether it's education, we all have our own expertise, we'll be more than happy to support. Thank you.
If you could leave your contact information, if you have your cards, or, you know, we would appreciate that, because I would, I would really like to speak with you, you know, afterwards.
Yes. And if you ever need a seminar on human trafficking, I would be more than happy to present for you at your council. And I am part, I'm a member of the State Attorney's Office Policy and Institute for Human Trafficking.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you for.
Thank you. We'll pass them on.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming out and your patience. With that said, Commissioner Stivison, Vice Mayor Viscara, Commissioner Lama, Commissioner Joseph, if we have any other comments, or are we ready to entertain this?
I just want to know, I just want to know what's the difference between a committee and a commission from a legal perspective? Is it still bound by the sunshine?
Of course.
Yeah.
It's, it's just, that's the way it's framed in generally every single one of these across the country. There's no prohibition in our code or in our charter as to what we call it. But it's, it's going to be framed just like a regular committee under Section 74-8.
And was I correct that as soon as the commission, if it's established, the mayor's pick becomes the committee head? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
The mayor's pick is always the chairperson of the committee or commission.
So if it was Joanna Rabinovich, who is a, you know, was rejected by the city.
Jerry.
Well, let's talk about it. We have someone who committed homestead fraud.
Jerry, Jerry, thank you so much. Jerry, this is, we're here to discuss the formation of the commission, and you certainly have your opinion. So you are welcome to.
And I believe a majority of the residents do not want Joanna Rabinovich to be any committee member.
If you, do we have any comments from any of the other commissioners, or can we entertain a motion?
I have a motion, a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Hold on, hold on, I still have some questions. So I just want to understand, because they came up here, and the way they were presenting it, it was a little not clear to me that what their role was. I know you read what their role is, so I just want to make sure it's more like an advisory type of role.
Yes, so.
And because they were talking about providing services here and there, and I was like, okay, are we going to get into?
So for me, so for me.
So that's what I want to have clear in my mind, yeah.
That's a fair, that's a fair comment. For me, I think it really depends on the city, right? What, what, there are hundreds of these commissions throughout the country.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that it's, it's like not a one-size-fits-all proposition, right?
This is a very liberal committee, committee that's being proposed.
Jerry, the needs of the, of North Miami Beach may be different from the needs of Sunny Isles Beach, or Bell Harbor, or any of the other municipalities. So presumably, however, just like when MAPSAC was formed, and they came up with their own ideas and their own recommendations, the whole theory is, or at least the way this ordinance reads, is that it will be up to the commission, their committee or their commission, to, to serve in an advisory capacity and identify those needs, whether they are catering to health services, or mental or physical health, or other issues pertaining to women, and it's really up to that particular committee to, you know, to move those items forward. So I'm sure that all these commissions in various different municipalities are differ.
No, I just want to make sure, because the way I see it, it's more like an advisory role, and if they need to seek some sort of help that's outside of the realm of this commission, that they go to the, to the right, let's say, organization, correct? Go ahead.
To address your issue, Commissioner, subsection C of the, of the proposed ordinance is entitled Limitation of Powers and reads as follows: "The powers and jurisdiction of the commission shall be purely advisory, voluntary, and persuasive, and any actions of the committee, including but not limited to programming, educational initiatives, and the acceptance of donations or grants, shall require approval by the City Commission."
Yeah, I understand. I just don't want to get into a situation where they're probably going beyond a scope of work that they should be handling, you know what I mean, and they getting into territory that perhaps they shouldn't be getting into. I mean, I'm all for this. We need to empower, we need to empower women, we need to provide guidance, but obviously, you know, we need to have a clear, let's say, scope of work of what this commission would do, yeah. You don't want to get entangled into doing different services that perhaps it could get out of hand. That's, that's basically my, my take, yeah, okay?
So, under the purview of our, you know, city. So, under the purview of our, you know, city staff and, and legal, you know, and given, given the, the, the guideposts of the ordinance itself, you can't veer off into the wilderness on this, right? I mean, it's not, I think that it's pretty self-evident, you know, from the four corners of this ordinance, you know, what, you know, how, how, how this commission, you know, what, what the, the scope will be for this.
Okay, yeah, all right. So it's going to be like a regular committee?
Like any other committee.
Okay, as long as...
Okay, so I have a motion to approve.
I'll second. Take a vote, roll call?
Commissioner Stuvason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
No.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Mayor Goldman, excuse me.
Yes.
So the ordinance passes four to one. Second reading will be scheduled for September nineteenth, fifteenth, excuse me.
Item...
Nine A?
Next item, nine A?
Yes, ordinance for second reading. So, "An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending ordinance number 2021-574, approving budget amendment number BA 2122-02 to the city's operating capital improvement budget for the 2021-2022 fiscal year, the General Fund and Capital Projects Fund. Authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to implement the terms and conditions of this ordinance, providing for an effective date."
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Staff, my apologies, I did not introduce myself the first time. Robert Marksmyer, Assistant Finance Director, City of Sunny Isles Beach.
And guitarist.
And I play guitar, too. So an honor to the hearing, once again. This is the second reading for Budget Amendment BA 2022-02. This is in regards to appropriating funds for the purchase of police vehicles. As you already know, this is already, this is due to the international supply chain shortages and due to the extended lead time we went, had to go ahead and purchase these vehicles. Any questions?
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
So moved, second? All in favor? Roll call?
Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuvason?
Yes.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
For the vehicles, okay. Item nine B.
"An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, creating Chapter 232 of the City of Sunny Isles Beach Court of Ordinances to be titled Commercial Photography, to provide for the regulation and permitting of commercial photography on private and public property, providing for exemptions, providing for penalties, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date."
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commission, this is the second reading of the ordinance for film permit, for a film permit for commercial filming. We understand you may have some changes you would like, but right now, our code is silent on any film permitting process, so.
Okay, well, we've, we've previously discussed this, and while I've indicated previously that I am okay with the general, you know, intent and purpose for this particular ordinance, I have some suggested comments or changes. But first, we have a public speaker. So, without further ado, would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is David Virgil. My address is 17500 North Bay Road, Sunny Isles Beach. I just have one, I just need one clarification. Let's say I take a picture and I want to sell it, whatever, would I be affected by this ordinance?
Did you take the picture with...
Let's say I take it with my phone or with a camera, and I want to sell it?
You would not.
Okay, only like companies that...
This is production, so if you're setting up equipment and production...
Well, I sometimes take a tripod to the pier, but it's like for myself, it's not to...
That's, that would not require a permit. But if you brought lights, mirrors, props, that would require...
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, we have no other public speakers on this item. So just a couple of my comments. So for me, I would approve this, but I'd like to have this ordinance amended to redact items such as wedding photography, or social media content, or items such as this, that really just, we, I don't see the real reason or rationale for requiring a permit if somebody wants to do Instagrammable moments, even if it's for a, even if it's for a commercial intent. So for me, I'd like to, I'd like to amend this, or move to amend, or tighten this up a little bit. For me also, wedding photography, I don't see this as a, there's, I don't see a good reason to require permitting for wedding photography. So, social media content event and wedding photography would be my items that I'm not, not in favor of including as part of this ordinance. Because the idea was, we need a film ordinance, and that would be for large-scale productions, filming, television, and so forth, not for, you know, not for social media, for minor items such as that.
Well, I think that as long as there's no, if it's a wedding, like we see it, like the pregnancy pictures, and if, it's, as long as there's not equipment, because you also want to have, allow for the enjoyment of the beach for the recreational purposes that we, that we expect it to have. So I think that as long as there's no equipment, and you don't have somebody just camping out the whole day with, with their things, whether it's a wedding or whatever, if there's no equipment, it's not, it's not, it doesn't interfere with the enjoyment of the beach by everybody else. So, I mean, I'm, I think that I would, I would be okay with that if, if...
Now, wedding is a short-term, beautiful experience, it's kind of a social, I don't, I don't see it as a, as a nuisance, creating a nuisance or some factor. I don't want code enforcement going in and saying, oh, you didn't get your permit, and, I don't know. For me, the wedding is just, it's very marginal to require, you know, put this within... I don't, this isn't, was never part of the county ordinance, let's put it that way. To me, this is somewhat far-reaching and distinctive of, you know, what, what is the county and, and other ordinances. This is, to me, on the far end. So...
To Vice Mayor's point, our deputy city attorney had a suggestion of in the definitions, adding, changing or to and. So it would be all of those things, motion pictures, commercials, advertisements, social media...
What page are you on, Susan, like?
I'm sorry, page two, the very top of page two.
Okay, thank you.
So it would be all those things, event photography, wedding photography, print media, and involving the erection and dismantling of equipment associated therewith.
But what's equipment? I mean, is that one phone, is that a tripod, or...
Equipment would be, you know, as we discussed, lights, mirrors, props, that type of, that's equipment.
So a single-use photographer with one phone and one tripod doesn't do it? And if there are two wedding photographers and a videographer, that's something that you would require a permit?
No, that would still not require a permit, because that's not production equipment.
So what is, and production equipment is, where is that?
Production equipment isn't actually, I'm sorry, I use that term, but equipment is the lights, the mirrors, the reflecting mirrors, you know, bringing out fake palm trees to make it look like a different scene, props, things like that, that's equipment.
So, I mean, again, does that mean every, but doesn't every large-scale wedding, or what, what, you know, what would trigger that, where literally 20 people are on the beach, and then all of a sudden...
20 people on the beach with a photographer, or two photographers, or a photographer and a videographer would not require. But if they bring out a structure that looks like an altar, or, you know...
And the 20 chairs?
Well, that already requires a special event permit, that's totally different.
Okay.
Right, this is like day of wedding, so day of wedding, you're already, through your special event permit, you can have a photographer, you can have props, you can have production equipment, you can have anything you want through the special event permit. But pre-wedding, or, you know, post-wedding, like as a separate something, you just want to go out to the beach with your photographer and have your full party, you know, bridal party of 20 people and a photographer at sunset, no problem. If you want to have 20 people, a photographer, a fake altar, you know, rose petals along the beach, you know, and do this full production, now you need a permit.
Well, would need to detail that? Do we need to detail, like...
Define equipment, you mean?
Define, you know, more than three cameras, and, you know, props and all that? Do we need to kind of put some sort of...
We've never had to before. I, I mean, we used to do this before, without it in our code, and we never had a problem, it was really...
I can see how like a, I mean, because obviously some weddings are huge productions, you know, so...
If, but, but again, if it's...
I can see how it would probably cross the line.
If it's the wedding on a beach, or in a park, or... They're already getting an outdoor special event permit, that would cover the photography, they don't need the film permit. So they would already have that covered there. This would be totally separate from that.
Have we had any issues with, with wedding pictures, or any wedding events here?
So we did have one, they actually wanted to have an elephant on the beach for their wedding photos, and it was not the day of the wedding, it was...
But that's not a photography issue, that was a, that was just an event issue. And then even with the, even the idea of social media content, for me, it's very broadly stated. What, what does that mean, again? For me, it's a little, it's over, it's, it's, it's just overly broad for me. And I don't, I don't see the reason why we need to put that in there.
I am actually okay with the social media one, because just promoting and promoting social media with the risk of social media for the young people. I'm now maybe the biggest fan of social media. I believe, I'm sorry, I believe it does more harm than good. And to regulate what they are able to do in our beaches, or our, I, I am okay with that, actually.
But you're, you're saying that just one, one phone, nobody's going to bother the person who's just carrying their own individual phone?
But if we have a, like, famous TikToker, or YouTuber, or whatever, making a production there, then they require a permit, right?
Correct.
And they should have some regulations there to follow. So I'm completely okay with that.
Correct.
So with, with social media, sometimes you have these influencers that are paid by brands, and then they come, and they have props, and they have, they do stupid stunts sometimes. So we need to kind of be careful with that. But I think we need to define this a little bit, a little bit more, yeah. We need to, some, some definition. Because if it's just one guy, kind of like doing a TikTok and doing some, some dance or whatever, I, I don't see how that would require a permit, yes.
So for me, I don't know if we should defer, I don't know if we want to defer, and then, you know, clean this up, and, you know, because for me, again, I keep saying, I'm not, I'm not comfortable...
We can defer.
We could defer.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's try to work on this. Can we, can I, can we get a motion, a move to defer, please? Second?
Yeah.
Do we need a vote on that, a roll call? Okay.
Just voice vote.
Vote, voice vote?
Yeah, all in favor.
All in favor, aye, okay, let's move along.
Aye.
Okay, item 10A?
10A is a resolution awarding requests for proposals number 220401-2, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into an agreement with Unitec for the deployment of a citywide fiber optic network.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commission. As most of you know, we've been working on this for a long time, for approximately 10 years now, putting conduits underground throughout the city. And we're finally at the point where we could utilize it, and we issued an RFP. And the recommendation of the committee is Unitec to deploy and install fiber connecting all of our facilities.
Basic question, why is fiber optics so important for our city?
So up until now, we utilize wireless for connectivity between all of our facilities. We have no physical infrastructure connecting our locations. And deploying this fiber is going to give us considerably superior redundancy and resiliency. So where, everywhere it's possible, we have multiple paths connecting every location. So if it gets dug up anywhere, the connectivity will still be in place while that cut is repaired. And we're going to own it, so we don't have to pay any third parties for these services of connecting our facilities, which we don't have to today for the majority of the wireless, but we do for some of the locations.
Thank you, thanks for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have no public speakers.
Make a motion?
Do we have a motion?
Yeah. First?
Do we have a second? All second? All in favor, we have a roll call on this? Or no roll call? No, voice vote, all in favor, aye? Thank you, Mr. Arias. Item 10B?
A resolution ratifying the expenditure of budgeted funds for year one, and to the agreement, and approving a second amendment to the agreement with Lighter Up MIA.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, this item in front of you tonight is for the First Amendment with Lighter Up, our holiday lights and decorations vendor for city. Last year, we went out for a request for proposal, Lighter Up was awarded that agreement with an amount not to exceed $407,000 for three years. The initial contract term was for $157,000, with two subsequent years of $125,000 each. Due to a last-minute add-on last year, we incurred an additional charge of $2,750. This amendment will ratify that additional expense that we weren't planned for, for last year. As you saw last year, our lights were bigger and better than ever. We had nothing but rave reviews. We had some, working with our vendor this year, that we realized there were some improvements that we could make. One in particular was the Christmas presents that we had at Gateway Park. Unfortunately, it collapsed on itself towards the end of the season last year, which they were very disappointed with their product. So they came to us this year with a recommendation for a brand-new massive castle that will take its place. 30 feet tall, or, my apologies, 32 feet tall by 30 by 30 base, which will be the showcase of our city decorations for this year and the coming years. In addition to that, we have some other items that they wanted to provide to us as part of getting on our good graces again, after some of the hiccups that we had last year. That would include the menorah for Heritage Park, additional tree wrap lighting in the parks along Collins Avenue, light panels at the monument signs along Collins that include Pier Park, Sampson, Town Center, and 174th Street entrance off of Collins Avenue. These additions will add a total cost to year two only of $31,444.55 for a total year cost of $156,444.55. Year three will remain the same, which was part of the original agreement, at $125,000. Total cost for the contract for the three years, $441,194.55, and that includes the initial ratification of $2,750. Yes, sir?
One question. When you drive through Bell Harbor during the holiday season, you have all of the trees are wrapped in the white lights. Then you get to Hollover, and the trees there, Hollover is Sunny Isles area? Part of it is...
No.
Where does it hit Sunny Isles?
The Tropicana. The Tropicana.
Tropicana, okay. So when you come out of Bell Harbor, and Hollover, there are no lights. Then you come to Sunny Isles, and the lights are on every tree, or no?
Not on every tree, no, sir.
Okay, and is there a way to at least have it be in some type of orderly manner that it looks nicer?
So I'd like to have Susan, or Colin, however you want to present, but we've had this conversation as well, because we do receive the commissioners, why can't we be like Bell Harbor, and why can't all the trees lit up? And there's, there's a reason why, because it's, these are, not all trees are within the public property, or city-controlled or owned trees. So the simple... or city-controlled or owned trees. So the simple answer is it's not possible or not feasible. So Colin, can you describe where in fact we can illuminate and we, where we really don't have the ability to illuminate?
I can start and then Susan can chime in because she'll have a little bit more detail probably than I can provide. Um, anywhere we have electrical service that is on right of ways on our property that we have the ability to do so, we have been connecting tree lights. Um, in addition to that, with the installation of the new light poles along Collins Avenue, those were, all have electrical GFI that we're able to hook into, that we were able to put lights on last year. As part of this process on Collins Avenue, we've run into some issues. We had some issues with the GFIs. That's why there was some sporadic outages. We're working with that thunder. They're gonna come out earlier this year to check every single light, every single GFI, every single tree, to make sure that we don't run into those hiccups again going forward.
So this year will look different?
There's gonna be more to it. That's part of why this amendment is here in front of you tonight to approve. Um, because like I said, there were some hiccups last year and they, and they approached me about making this better because they want to, they want to showcase what they can do and this is their opportunity to do so.
So that's one of the issues that people have in mind.
So it's, it's twofold, right? It's where electrical service is available, but it's also what's considered public property and what's private property. So Susan, perhaps you can add some, 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 some detail to this.
And Paul Abbott's here. We talked about this. Have I known you ten years, like ten years ago? Um, one of the first conversations was how we could get power to all the other medians. Um, and that was a cha, that's a challenge. So then we looked at solar and solar was not, because you need so many strings, it wasn't practical. Um, so we have now strong, as Colin said, everywhere that we do have power. So at the north and south entrance, that median has power because we have a, you know, an entrance sign there. And, um, when you come in from the William Lehman, that also has power in that median with all the, the, the trees. And then through the undergrounding pros, project and the street lighting, we did get the trees that are right along that ramp when you're heading north going to the, on the William Lehman. So all of that was lit last year and we got some other ones on, on that side. And then at Inoc coastal Park, all of those are our trees. We'll be lighting all those at Pier Park. So everywhere that we can along Collins Avenue of trees that we own, we maintain because a lot of them are private, um, and that we have power to, we're having lit.
So not all trees, that's the point, not all trees, right? So you see.
And we don't have the median width that Belle Harbor has with all of those trees that they have in their median. It's just, it's a totally different geography.
But as you see, um, different properties, different buildings, they, they ta, they're tasked with lighting up their trees on their property. So some will have a more, will illuminate in a much higher fashion than others.
I didn't have the answer, so now I have the answer.
Okay, so you're all set? Okay, good. Okay, good. All right. So thank you so much. Okay.
I have a question, but it's not for Colin. So thank you, Colin. Um, talking about the winter lights, um, will it be possible to get again the, the proposal for the market, the Christmas market or the winter festival that was presented that, that year for Gateway? Back then, I really liked that presentation and the idea of bringing winter to Sunny Isles, considering that we don't have snow or anything like that. Um, so I really liked that, uh, presentation last year. So is it possible to maybe get them to give us a proposal for this winter season?
I will reach out to them and see if that's even possible at this late date.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I think one of the issues was that that's when we started with the project, the, the bridge.
Of the bridge, correct.
And that they were concerned about the, the traffic.
But we learned to live with that, you know.
We have, but it, the, if they're looking to lure other, you know, people from the outside and you don't have a traffic friendly situation, it may not be a palatable, uh, place for them if they're standing to, you know, not bringing the money. I mean, we can explore it, but I remember that that was a big issue. And we're still gonna be in that situation this December.
Yes, and Mauricio just reminded me that that was a bid and we had to reject that and we would have to go out to bid again. So being July, we could probably get it out in August because we would just duplicate it. I would have to see if that's even possible to do this.
Thank you.
Now, wasn't there an issue with the electrical bill?
Commissioner Joseph was asking if there was an issue with the electrical bill. It wasn't an issue, it was part of the.
Or a percent or something?
It was, no, the partnership or the, the agreement had that we paid the electric.
Right.
And they paid for all of the setup, the personnel and everything else. So we pay utilities.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
I believe we do.
Yeah, motion.
Do you have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you, Colin, thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Appreciate you.
Item ten C.
Ten C is a resolution approving a first amendment to the agreement with CT Mechanical to provide extended warranty and maintenance services for the air conditioning system at Gateway Park Community Center.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor Commission, in July twenty-twenty-one, um, through Resolution twenty-twenty-one-three-two-two-one that the city engineer recommended and you approved, to enter an agreement with CT Mechanical for the ongoing preventative maintenance and warranty services of our HVAC system at Gateway Park, Gateway Center. My apologies. Uh, the original agreement was for one year with four one-year options to renew. Uh, this past year, CT Mechanical has met our expectations, they're responsive, they, they were easily accessible. Whenever we have issues, we're able to get in touch with them and they send their staff whenever, um, as quickly as possible. So we'd like to, um, we would like to go in and accept our first renewal with them. Exercise our option to renew, my apologies. For that annual amount, forty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-one cents plus a contingency for any parts or unexpected repairs of up to ten thousand dollars for a total not to exceed amount of fifty, fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-one cents.
We have no, um, no public speakers. Um, do we have any comments or questions? I think this is pretty straightforward, so.
Just define the responsive company these days. Have to go with them.
Absolutely. No, we can, we can text the, our contact from them and he'll adjust settings for us. We've had some issues with some of the temperatures for some of our fitness classes, um, recently. And he sent his staff out, he's responsive to me when I reach out to him. So it's a, it's a good option to renew.
Okay. Thank you so much. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, make a motion.
Motion.
Second?
Taken.
We have that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item ten D.
Thank you, Colin.
Ten D is a resolution requesting waiver of the bidding requirements set forth in chapter sixty-two of the city code, approving an agreement with Martin &amp; Sons Residential Services for pressure cleaning services.
Good evening, I'm Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners and our city staff. I'm here representing Fabricio this evening. He could not be with us, so I'll be presenting this item. This is for pressure cleaning services and acrylic seal coat ser, ser, seal coat services, a related service. The, uh, pressure cleaning services are a piggyback on the city of Weston contract and the seal coat services are a waiver of bidding. It is a small item that may or may not be part of the contract, but they are the company that we normally have perform that as a part of their pressure cleaning services. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them. But not to exceed will be seventy-two thousand on this for the year.
Um, can, we have, we have no public speakers on this item. Um, can you describe how often we doing the pressure cleaning on our sidewalks? What's our maintenance schedule and will there be any expected changes to that in the, in the future?
So in the past, we were doing, um, pressure cleaning on the interior streets was done by this company and it was done each April. We have looked at pressure cleaning as a whole in the city. And now, by the way, Collins Avenue being an F dot street and requiring all the MOT, maintenance of traffic efforts and such, those were always, that pressure cleaning was always done by city staff. We will continue doing that. They did that at minimum once a year with spot cleaning whenever was necessary. We are attempting to step that schedule up to twice a year. This company will continue to do interior streets once a year under this contract, no change to their contract. Our city staff, we intend to do a second cleaning. We're gonna modify the schedule. Instead of doing it in April, we've had some issues with specifically palm trees and palm tree fruits and when those fruits drop off the trees. So instead of doing it in April, we're gonna wait till after June when all these little fruits fall. We're looking at July for the first pressure cleaning and then December and making it twice a year with spot cleaning in between for any of the unusual items. Our city staff will be doing twice, hopefully on Collins, which is MOT related, and then the second cleaning that this company does not do on the interior streets for all of our sidewalks. And as Susan has pointed out succinctly in other meetings, um, our bus shelters are done weekly, no matter what, by our staff. So those require more frequent cleaning just due to use and litter and types of things from, from the users of the shuttle system, et cetera.
So we're going on a bi-annual basis?
Yes, now. That is the intention.
Good. Excellent. So unless we have any questions from the, uh, from the commission? Can we hear a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Second? Commissioner Lama, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Keep our sidewalks clean. Item ten E.
Ten E is a resolution approving the expenditure of budgeted funds with Central Square Technologies for the purchase of computer licenses and upgrades to the police department computer network.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Commission. I'm here tonight, um, seeking approval to purchase computer licenses and electronic citation module and a software upgrade to our police computer with Central Square for an amount not to exceed eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. The funds being utilized are Department of Justice forfeiture funds previously approved in the June commission meeting.
No comment, no public speaker comments? I was wondering if we could also aggregate items ten E and ti, ten F or we want to read them separately?
Um, yeah, we can do those. Those are related as well.
Thank you.
And then.
So let me just read it into the record.
What about ten G? Can we aggregate all three or no?
I would leave that one out because it's unrelated to the infrastructure.
Okay, let's go with item ten F as well.
Ten F is a resolution approving the purchase of portable printers and associated hardware from inside public sector.
So we're seeking approval to purchase in-car printers for the use with our electronic citation module from inside public sector in an amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and nine cents. The funds being utilized again are Department of Justice forfeiture funds previously approved in the June commission meeting. The printers will allow our officers to issue citations electronically and provide the violator with a copy of the citation.
Okay, we have no public speakers on that item as well. I think we pretty much, uh, know about, uh, the, the emphasis on technology and, and applying the forfeiture funds towards upgrading the technology and the efficiency of our police systems.
Yes.
I just have one question, Chief.
Yes, sir.
A question that a lot of residents are interested in. Once we procure this equipment, how long before it's installed and useful to our officers?
So, um, first, we have to see how long it takes to come in. I don't have the exact date.
Right.
Um, once it comes in and once it's installed, um, it, 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 there's some training involved and it should be right away. I just don't have the timeframe of, you know, we have, when we order them, I don't have more of a timeframe when, when we, when we get them in, installing from there.
So after tonight, then the order is placed, correct? Yes. Right. Yes. Okay. And until they actually come in and they're installed, we're still doing handwritten tickets?
Yes.
So until we can get the electronic tickets, we have less tickets written, correct? Because this would speed up.
Definitely would speed up, yes.
And allow us to write more tickets which are sorely needed to be written.
And also it allows our, our records division not to manually input every ticket that is written because it goes directly to the courthouse in our system automatically.
Yeah, so it speeds up the whole system.
Yes.
Okay. So the sooner the better.
Do we have any other comments from the commission? Do we have a motion?
Yes, so moved. Taken.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Lama, Commissioner Stivison, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. Uh, item ten G. And if we can, uh, can we aggregate items ten, these are vehicular purchases?
Yeah.
Ten G and ten H, can we, and, and I?
So ten G, ten G is a resolution authorizing the purchase of three Polaris utility task vehicles and associated equipment. Ten H is authorizing the chief of police to expend partial forfeiture funds for the purchase of a twenty-twenty-three Chevy Tahoe. And ten I is approving the expenditure of budgeted funds for the purchase of twenty-twenty-three Chevy Tahoe.
Again, we are seeking approval to purchase, um, three UTVs, two for the police department and one for code enforcement from McKibben Motorsports in an amount not to exceed forty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents, which includes a five percent contingency for any unexpected price increases. The police department UTVs were budgeted as capital items in our current budget and, um, inventory was recently, um, located. And the next one is we're seeking approval to expend Department of Forfeiture Funds in an amount not to exceed sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars for the purchase of a police command staff vehicle, a Chevy Tahoe, and that's fully outfitted.
We have no public speakers and so if we have any comments from the commission?
Nope.
Well, I just think this will help us with the enforcement piece, right? We're getting you the proper equipment. We're gonna get beach vehicles, so then no more smoking and no more dogs. Good.
I have one more too, I'm sorry. Yeah, second page. We're seeking approval to spend sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars for the aforementioned command staff vehicle with Alan J Fleet Sales. This vehicle is being purchased at a discounted rate via Sourcewell contract. And thank you for Genesis for finding it was the last one that somehow popped up and it probably, it easily saved us about ten thousand dollars on the government contract.
A, a really important, uh, direction and emphasis on upgrading all systems, all equipment, all features of a really successfully operating department. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have to vote? Wait, a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a, don't go anywhere. We have to approve it. Move to approve. Motion, Commissioner Lama, do we have a second? Uh, Commissioner Stivison, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you as always.
H I, H and I. Now we're on ten K. Ten K.
J or K?
J or K? Hold.
Ten K.
J.
Ah, the millage rate, the millage rate. The millage rate, well.
Okay, so ten J is a resolution establishing the city of Sunny Isles Beach out of a lower tax millage levy rate at two mils per one thousand dollars of taxable assessed value, which is four point five percent more than the rollback rate of one point nine one three nine mils for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Staff, Robert Marks-Mayer. This, uh, resolution is for the tentative, uh, millage rate reduction from, uh, two point one to two point zero reduction. This is a reduction of a one-tenth of a mil and this is to help offset the increase of the, uh, ta, uh, taxable assessed value that was established by Miami-Dade County Property Appraisers Office. This is, uh, continuing the trend of the city of, uh, the practice of reducing the, um, millage rate and also tentatively, uh, to be discussed further at the city commission workshop that's scheduled for August sixteen at ten in the morning. Any questions?
We have no public speakers, but just like to say how, um, we really, um, are mindful of our economy and, uh, the economic circumstances and we're mindful of, um, continuing to be, uh, conservative and giving the, giving the, uh, the tax, uh, the lowering of the millage rate, which is great that we're able to continue this, along this trend each year, one-tenth of one mil. Now we are essentially the third lowest of the municipalities and the fourth in the entire, amongst thirty-four municipalities. We're now, uh, amongst the lowest, uh, percentile. So it's great to be able to, uh, be in a position to really, you know, serve the, serve the community and serve the needs of the community. So thank you for all the work that's been done and continuing to, you know, move in this direction, uh, for the benefit of the residents.
Thank you, Honorable.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, do we, do we have any other comments from the commission or city manager on this item? No? Okay, um, do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Vice Mayor Viscara, second. Commissioner Joseph, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item ten K.
And we're combining 10L as well.
10K and 10L, but this is not a consent agenda, right?
Should be. 10K is a resolution approving your first amendment to the agreement with Cronos SAR for time and attendance software. 10L is a resolution approving your first amendment to the agreement with Cronos Incorporated for a staff scheduling software.
This resolution is for the exercising of the first opinion, uh, option, uh, to renew, uh, this, uh, software for an additional year. We have three options we're going to, recommending to go ahead and renew for an additional year. It is a software used for the time and attendance for the city. It is a, um, software we are satisfied with, and its capabilities, and we desire and wish to continue with it.
Okay. We have, um, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm done.
You're done?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you done?
This, this is, and that's for both, um, a both.
It's the same vendor?
Correct, it's the same vendor.
So it's the same, and you're happy?
Yes, we are.
Okay, if you're happy, we're happy, so...
Great, thank you, and I think the police department will be happy, too, the second one is for, for their staff, so, and they are as well.
Absolutely, keep, keep moving along.
Yes.
So we have, we have no public speakers, we have any comments from the, from the commission, or if we want to have a...
If they're happy, we're happy.
So moved, Commissioner Lama, second, Vice Mayor Viscara, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Item 10N.
N. Thank you.
M as in Mary. A resolution approving your first amendment to agreement with Derserv Corp. doing business as overhead door company of Suffolk.
Thank you for joining.
Thank you, I was watching on TV. But, um, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager and Staff. This agenda item deals with the security gates we're putting in at the first-floor garage. It's just an item to reimburse the contractor for permit fees that he paid on behalf of the city for the permit.
Twenty-eight hundred dollars and seventy-nine, twenty-eight seventy-nine and ninety-six cents.
That's right.
Okay, we're, we're, we're nodding, no, it's bubkis, huh? Okay, um, so, uh, we have no public speakers on this twenty-eight seventy-nine point ninety-six item, and, um...
I don't believe it.
I don't, we have any comments on that? No comments? Okay. No public speakers, can we, um, can we have a motion?
So moved.
All, second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Lama, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Lewinsky. Okay, item number 10N.
A resolution approving an in-kind donation to the Norman S. Ettercup Sunny Isles Beach K-38 school.
Okay, so, um, I do want to acknowledge a resident in our community who, um, actually, a mother of school-aged children who actually had this, uh, who brought this forward as a recommendation, and it was, uh, it is Joanna Robinovich who brought this to our attention. And, um, this is basically Stop the Bleed is a grassroots national awareness campaign and call to action which encourages bystanders to become trained, equipped, and empowered to help in a bleeding emergency before professional help arrives. So bleeding is one of the most common injuries among survivors of an emergency, and rapid loss of blood can result in death. A person can die from blood loss within five minutes. Those nearest someone with life-threatening injuries are best positioned to provide first care and significantly increase a person's chance of survival. So in our city's effort to, uh, equip our own school, in which many of us here have school-aged children who are in that school, we want to have the, the school with the tools that they need to fully care for our children, and we recommend that there is a donation of a hundred and twenty-five Stop the Bleed kits and instructional posters to the Norman S. Ettercup Sunny Isles Beach K-8 school. In partnership with school principal, Ms. Mesa has agreed to ensure that the teachers receive the proper training to use the kit in the event of an emergency. The donation of these kits, along with the training, will provide lifesaving tools that can help in critical moments before first responders can invite, can arrive. They will empower teachers, staff, and students with the essential tools to control life-threatening bleeding from emergencies using proven lifesaving equipment. So Stop the Bleed kits, the, the idea here is to provide one kit for each classroom, there are a hundred and twenty-five classrooms in our school. As many of you know, we have the, probably the largest K-8 school in the county, and we are in absolute, it is, it is, it is a gift to provide this really important tool. God forbid that we should ever need to employ this, but the fact is, it really should be, it should really be part of our, our school and protecting, you know, in any way possible the lives of the children of our city who inhabit and attend this school. So with that, um, we do have a public speaker, uh, would like to call our, our public speaker here. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Your name and address for the record.
Oh, yes. Uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Staff, fellow residents. My name is Alexander DePaula, I'm a resident at 100 Kings Point Drive, Sunny Isles Beach, Florida. I'm here to speak in favor of item 10N, Stop the Bleed, on behalf of myself and the parents who asked me to represent them here. Why am I in favor of this item? Because as a parent, I value teaching my children and preparing them for life. However, sadly, because of our ever-changing world, I cannot protect them everywhere they go. However, I can try to prepare them for what they might be coming up against. Having these kits and training in school can help them help themselves before first responders can reach them, heaven forbid, in the worst-case situation. This training can help them not only in active shooter situations, but in other tragic, traumatic situations. It's a small price to pay for this enhanced education and the potential to save lives. Thank you for your time and considerations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment. Um, I would like to, I think it's necessary, and I'm for it, but I would like to expand it to include our, uh, high school, Alonson Tracy Morning. All the, most of the high schoolers of Sunny Isles Beach go to Alonson Tracy Morning, and I don't want to ever think of, uh, the possibility of them needing to use these kids, but I would feel more safe, uh, if they have it in the high school as well.
Okay.
I would just like to add, I prep north as well, we have many students that go there as well.
I don't know... I think those, I think these are separate issues, and we should focus on the school in Sunny Isles Beach, uh, because then we do go down that slippery slope and that's, uh, we've considered these monies. I was wondering where the, where the numbers came from, I understand it's a hundred and twenty-five classrooms, and we've, we've considered it with these parameters, I'm not against considering other things, but, but I, I mean, expanding it, how much, to what? We, we didn't think about those numbers when we were looking at this. I don't know, you know what I mean?
No, I, I understand, I get it, but it's still like, uh, the big majority of our children, uh, high schoolers go to Alonson Tracy Morning. I don't know the amount that they go to I prep. I know how many buses are going every morning back and forth, uh, to Alonson Tracy Morning, so I would like, um, I think it's necessary to also prepare them, and I need to have the chance to, uh, speak with Mr. Shin about it, um, but that'll be my proposal to, to, to pass this resolution.
Okay. So, um, well, we're, we're, I think we can, you know, identify, identify and, you know, consider that, but the, but the, I would, uh, concur with Vice Mayor Viscara that the matter at hand is really for us for now to really, uh, safeguard our, our children having this extra layer of protection and aid and assistance for our children here and now in our school right now, and then perhaps, because this is through a, a gift or a donation process, and then we can probably entertain, you know, separately what, you know, what would be needs and how that would work, uh, for the other schools.
Is somebody donating, or is the city?
It's for us, it's, it's for, it's us through the city donating to the school, as is, has been done, for example, in the city of Miami Beach.
I understand.
And they have these Stop the Bleed kits in their, in their classrooms, and they do it in other municipalities, so I think our focus is really, um, for, for our school, for the, for the time being.
I understand, but the thing is that we are not going to have any commission meeting until September, so if we're gonna purchase these, and we're gonna purchase one-twenty-five kits, maybe we can just make a, a amendment instead of one-twenty-five, two-twenty-five, and one hundred to Alonson Tracy Morning, if that's possible.
I, I don't, I don't know that it's possible within this resolution, but I will, you know, we can certainly, you can certainly have that conversation with the principal, and we would, we would evaluate that separately, but I think this is really the starting place of, it's our kids, it's our school, it serves the public purpose for, for our children and our families here in the city.
Okay.
Again, I don't know how many classrooms there are, what the, the demographics are, and so on and so forth, but I think we start, we start here with our school and, and now.
I'd just like to say, I believe every school needs to have it. I just don't know if Sunny Isles needs to fund every school.
And, and that's based, that's my point, it's, you know, I would, I would love to throw in, I prep, right, our children go there, but...
Exactly.
But, but it's, it's, I don't think it's appropriate, not, we, we didn't consider that, um, you know, in the, there, there's a, a budget for these things, I didn't consider those numbers, I don't know if we're within it or not. I think we focus on what's in front of us, and if we want to expand and consider other things, then we do that separately when we're looking at the right numbers and at the right data, uh, because I didn't consider that when we, when we were, you know, studying this point. So I think, I think we keep it to the four corners of what's in front of us. But, and that would be my motion, I guess.
So, um, that being said, um, your feeling about this?
Let's, uh, let's, uh, focus on this one, I mean, I think for, to add the other schools or, or ATM, we would need to obviously run the numbers, see what their need is, and then do our homework, and then...
And, and with the other schools, with the other schools, there's other municipalities.
Well, we could, we could also talk to the county, see if they could perhaps help, so, so obviously, you know, um, we focus on the task at hand, I mean, because I think, uh, work went into this, there was a specific number, specific monetary number as well, and, um, you know, we have it in front of us, so let's approve this, and then, you know, we, we start perhaps with the, with the other...
And you're, you're right, work did go, work did go into it, work did go into this.
And I think any other considerations, because this is the easy one, right? This is clearly the school in the city, clearly in our municipal stuff. Anything, anything beyond that, I, I would, I would want to consider then having other municipalities chip in, I, I don't, you know, and, and have a broader conversation if we're gonna cover the need, because what good does a hundred do if they need five hundred? How do you pick that? And then it's a whole, it, it unravels, so...
Yeah, we don't know what their needs are at this point.
Exactly, so it would be, I think, have to be... Correct. It's a bigger conversation.
But they have many other schools in North Miami Beach. Our children, the majority of the high schoolers go to ATM, so...
Yeah, but maybe, maybe the three cities can, can combine efforts and pitch and get the money and get the kids and...
Or maybe we just can do it for them, too. You know, why not?
Yeah, I don't know, but we, at this point, we don't know how many, like, I don't know how many classes.
I have no idea. I don't have a idea.
I don't know how many kids they would need, all of that.
But, you know, again, work went into this, there has been direct communication and conversation with our principal, a really, uh, an understanding of where you would store these kits, how many you would need, what's appropriate, what, how the training, and how that, so there has already been, the groundwork is set, and, and it's really the idea from our standpoint, do we want to gift our school and our families with this? And I think we can, I'm reasonably certain we can agree...
I completely agree.
There's a value and a benefit to having these Stop the Bleed kits in our school, given the macro environment in which we're all based.
No, I completely agree, completely. The thing is that I feel, uh, ATM also has our school, even though that is not in our, it is not in our physical boundaries, but it is our school where our children go, yeah, so...
Yeah, but right now, we don't have, we don't know...
Okay, I'll bring it for the next, I'll, I'll bring it for the next meeting, okay.
Let's talk to them, see what they...
I'll bring, I'll take care of it, and I'll bring it for the next meeting, the, the proposal.
And, and for, for our, for our children and our families, and for our school, um, can we, can we have a motion?
So moved.
Vice Mayor Viscara, second, Jerry Joseph, Commissioner Joseph, all in favor?
Aye.
Stop the Bleed, thank you so much, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for waiting, it was well worth the wait, huh? Some things are. Okay, thank you. Item 10O.
10O is a resolution approving the lease agreement between the city of Sunny Isles Beach and Suffolk Construction Company.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, um, we have a, a vacant Tony Roma's right across the driveway from here, um, it needs some work, we are in the process of developing the RFQ, so we could see what restaurateurs would like to rent that space, and in the meantime, we have an opportunity to rent that out to the construction company that is doing work at Aquilina across the street for five thousand dollars for ten desks, five thousand dollars a month for ten desks. They will be out within two weeks of when we give them notice, but certainly no later than December 30th of 2022.
And we are moving forward with the RFP, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
There is a, quite a bit of, uh, interest in that.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any comments, uh, we have no public speakers, any, any comments from the commission?
Nope.
I would just like to clarify one issue.
Sure.
That, um, just, um, uh, just so the residents know, Suffolk Construction Company is owned by Aquilina. Just, um, so that there's, uh, clarification and nothing is hidden.
Transparency. Thank you, Commissioner Joseph. Any other comments?
But this is for the building of the Aquilina Garage, right? Like, that is, those are, those, those offices?
No, it's actually for, um, they're finishing up across the street, so they had their construction office trailer across the street.
I see.
Um, because they've gotten to a certain level, they had to remove that, and they didn't have anywhere until then where their office is for this right next door.
They just needed office space, and this was available.
Okay, I thought, I was under the impression that it was the garage, too.
And we're happy to have the, uh, the rent for that short period of time.
Okay.
Works for me.
Make a motion.
Motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Stivison, Vice Mayor Viscara, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 10P.
10P is a resolution approving an agreement with Ronald Book for professional legislative relations and lobbying services.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is our standard renewal or agreement that we have with Ron Book for lobbying services.
We, uh, received a memorandum of some of the appropriations that, um, that, uh, Ron Book's, uh, office has facilitated, so...
Yes, we received questions from a number of you during our review about the success of the lobbying efforts, and we prepared a memo for you. They've exceeded the amount of monies that we pay so far.
Okay.
Uh, I have a question, so with this, and this memo says, 174th pedestrian bridge, one award through F dot local transportation projects, and 425,000, one veto.
That was, yeah.
Ma'am? That was, it went through all the committees as an award, uh, to fund that project, and then the governor vetoed it.
Oh, that's true, because they were paying the budget, yeah.
Correct, yes.
So I was wondering about that.
It got all the way up to the governor... It got all the way up to the governor's desk.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. Yeah.
And, and in the current year? No, no, no. Go ahead. Go ahead.
So if we do decide, obviously, there's talk about, you know.
It's all on us.
Yeah. We, we could still go ahead and, and apply for another grant, right?
Yes.
Decide to do something on 174th Street.
Yes. Not just grants, but state appropriations as well.
Right. But right now, off the bat, it's right on us. It's all on us.
No, I understand. Yeah.
And, and these are, are these current appropriations in the, in the, in this, in this legislative session, in the last two legislative sessions, or no?
That is what was recently done. We just applied this week, last week, for another $350,000 for the Golden Shores pump station.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay. Okay.
Just, if I have a question, just regarding the pump station, because I know there are people that are interested. How long before we have those new pumps in? Any idea?
It's still in the design phase. We had designed it. We put it on the shelf. In the meantime, we had made some temporary repairs. And so now they've pulled them back on the shelf, have to make some moderate modifications and then it'll go back out to bid. And Rick Lebinsky would have the most up-to-date information on that, if you would like to call him up.
Perfect.
That's, that's through the ARPA. The ARPA funds are.
No. No. This is through, this is the Golden Shores pump station. It's in the CIP. It's in your budget.
The CIP, but the, the pump station's in the Center Island.
That's a different one. I'm sorry. Were you asking about Golden Shores or Center Island?
Yes, Golden Shores.
But I know that there's a connection between the North Bay Road, where we have flooding in Center Island, and also Golden Shores, correct?
Mr. Lebinsky is your best resource.
Hi. Good evening, commissioners and staff. As far as the Golden Shores pump station, we're looking to have revised drawings by the end of August and be able to put it out to bid in September, October timeframe.
So not till next year then with new pump, with new pumps?
Correct. And right now we have, we had just replaced all the pumps. So we have a new system in there to date for what's there.
Right.
We want to take it to another level with larger pumps and emergency generator system and updated operations.
Yep. New automatic turn-ons and all that.
Yeah, and, and remote monitoring.
Yep.
So we can tell what's happening.
Now, does the same issue stand for Center Island? Because we have major flooding and heavy rains on North Bay Road over there.
Well, not, not exactly the same issues, but we are designing similar stations for that area. Those are presently nearing a final completion of plans. We've all, we've already gone through a phase of Miami-Dade review. But we also are coordinating with North Miami Beach for their water main project that they're planning to do.
Right.
So we could bid them concurrently and get them built at the same time.
Okay. So both issues then are 2023?
Yeah. And part, a lot of that depends on materials. When we get the contractors on board, you know, I don't have a good handle on the lead time for the pumps especially. They have to be custom-made. So it'll, we'll have to work on scheduling because we want to, we don't want to really tear everything up for the summertime season, which usually is a rainy season, but this year it doesn't seem that bad. So we have to work the schedules out once we get final plans and permits.
Okay. Yeah. You know how residents are with expectations and I don't want to raise someone's expectations and then, you know, say, oh, it's going to be a year now. So, okay, so expect 2023.
We should have both projects going.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we taking a, a motion?
We need a motion, yes.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are on.
10Q.
Moving right along. 10Q?
10Q is a resolution approving change order numbers two and three to the agreement with the Stout Group for the construction of the Golden Shores utility undergrounding project.
Do you have any comments, Mr. Manager?
Keep it brief.
Commission, management, staff. First, thank you for the proclamation.
For the record.
Paul Thomas Abbott, president and owner of HPF Associates Incorporated. You want anything more? Thank you for proclamation 5F. It was very much appreciated by senior citizens. All of our senior citizens. I'm serious. That was nice. I appreciate it. Change orders two and three for Stout. Normally, we go through the first phase of an undergrounding process, putting in the conduit, the, the concrete product. We have FPL do their portion of work. Then we go back and make the connections to the individual residents. We are so incredibly pleased with the performance of Stout. We thought that if they had the capability within their staffing to do these utility connections into the homes, we will be able to speed up the project tremendously. You know, we always said 18 months to do that first phase. Now, maybe in 26 months, we can do not only phase one, but phase two and have the entire neighborhood energized. So with your authorization, we're going to release Stout to begin the installation of the conduit between the property line and the individual, the individual homes. That won't be the installation of power. It won't be electrical wires or anything. It'll just be getting the conduit in that gives FPL the facility to make their final connections. The other item on the, on the change orders was we were keeping Roll on standby and paying them a monthly fee to be available to accomplish the miscellaneous things left to do, primarily with the streetlight project. There's still 12 streetlights left to be completed. And, and it was costing us $7,500 a month to maintain Roll. Piggybacking back on Stout, their capabilities and their performance, we felt it was cost-effective to terminate Roll for convenience, not for cause, and to shift those responsible items into the Stout contract. So that's why these things are presented to you tonight. Yes, sir?
Sorry, one question. So the houses now that currently don't have power to the, you know, to the street underground, and FPL comes in to put the conduit to the house itself?
FPL does not put the conduit in. We put the conduit in.
Okay. So you're putting the conduit. So is the homeowner going to pay a fee?
That's a decision upon that, that commission has to take under account.
So how quickly now are you moving to do that?
I beg your pardon?
How quickly are you moving to put in the conduit?
Immediately. I want to piggyback it on Stout has already completed 191st Terrace. They're almost done 191st Street. They're, they're S-turning through the town. They went down 91st Terrace. They're coming up 91st Street. They're going to go down 90th, 190th Street.
So how quickly do we have to address the homeowners that may be paying a fee?
It's, again, that's a policy decision. I deal with physical installation and you folks deal with policy.
But Paul, that would come at the end of the project, right? Like when we're getting closer to energizing?
Again, I will defer to you guys for the default policy. I've worked in innumerable communities and innumerable communities have handled it in innumerable ways. How they assess, how they, it, it, we, we'll have that discussion as you ask me for it. There are multiple ways of handling that situation. But what we're doing now is it's much more cost-effective to do this work while they're there, while they're in the neighborhood and things are disrupted. This is just one more thing to do. I, I honestly didn't recommend it when they first started on 191st Terrace and 191st Street because I hadn't seen their performance. Now that I see their performance, it is impeccable. I haven't had a complaint. I've had some comments about, well, shouldn't they be going faster? Well, if they go faster, the community's more disrupted and upset. Manager didn't want me to talk this long tonight. They're, I, I don't want to, I don't, I don't want this to backfire on me. I don't want to praise them too much, but they're doing a darn good job.
A nod of approval from our city manager. More money, but better performance, right?
More money for better performance. One more step. There is a established unit price for this type of conduit installation within state contract. And Stout is doing it for us for $8 a linear foot less than what if they were doing a state project, they'd be doing it for, for a linear foot. It just shows the efficiency of the operation.
Okay. With that being said, do we have a motion? Do we have a? Commissioner Stivison, second. Commissioner Lama, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. This is, I think this is the last one, right? 10R?
And two more.
Two more? 10R.
10R is a resolution presenting section 5.1 of the municipal charter calling for a general election to be held on Tuesday, November 8th. This is for the general election for office of the mayor, seat two and seat four. This resolution also provides for a runoff if it's necessary on December 6, 2022, which is roughly about 30 or 28 days or so. The resolution also provides for the appointment of a candidacy board member. Gloria Taft, longtime resident, has accepted and is willing and able to continue serving on the candidacy board. And just one clarification on the resolution, commissioners. In section six of the resolution on the second page, the date, it mentions the, the deadlines to register to vote. Just to clarify that the deadline for the general election on November 8th is Tuesday, October 11th, not Monday, October 10th.
And how can people get information? They go on the website to register?
Yes, to register to vote, you go to the Miami-Dade County Elections Department's website. All the information is there. You can either register to vote online directly or you can print out the application and mail it in. If you mail it in, you just have to make sure that you attach a copy of your driver's license and make sure that you sign it and that when that application is signed, that you remember how you signed that application because that's the signature that the elections department uses to compare your ballot with. And if there's any, anything that may be off or anything that differentiates from what they have on file, it will be rejected.
Okay.
And one more thing, I'm so sorry. Just to remind everyone, precinct four changed. It's no longer the inner coastal. It is now Gateway Center. And that's effective as of August 23rd.
Thank you for your work in making that happen. That's really going to be a big improvement on our voter, our in-person voter experience to have that, that precinct moved over.
Definitely for that precinct, yeah.
Okay. If there are no, no public speakers, no comments, any questions? Are we ready to entertain a motion? Commissioner Stivison, so moved?
Well, second?
Second Vice Mayor Viscara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
10S is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign and renew all required contracts, agreements and purchase orders during the summer recess period. That's basically what it is.
Don't go wild on us, okay? Don't go crazy.
Yeah. I just want to let you know, I don't plan on, you know, unless there's some type of an emergency. But should I approve anything, I will absolutely bring it back the first meeting in September for ratification.
Not too many pens, right? Okay. No public speakers. If we have move, a motion? Commissioner Lama, second. Commissioner Stivison, all in favor?
Public. Yeah, public comment. And did I miss the motion to approve the resolution?
Yes.
Did I miss it? I'm sorry.
Yeah, you missed it.
I'll look back. Don't worry.
It's all right. Happens to the best of us, huh?
Can't be perfect.
No, we don't have any, no public speakers on this, on this item. So summer recess, huh?
General public.
Oh, the public forum, Mary. And we do have a public speaker.
Public forum. Where's the?
Deferred, I think.
12B is deferred, 12A is, has been covered. 12B is deferred.
You have a change to the agenda?
After recess. Citizens forum. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Step up.
Once again, good evening, honorable mayor, commission. My name is David Virgil. My address is 17500 North Bay Road. I first want to thank the city for adding the benches along North Bay Road in April. They were a great addition for people who want to take a rest, walking back from Publix or after working out. I would like to ask if you could also add trash cans or recycling bins next to those benches because I noticed that there's one bench by the bus stop near Publix and the next trash can is by Guanmar Golis Park, half a mile down. And sometimes I want to throw like a bag or something. And I think a garbage bin or recycling bin would be great next to the benches.
Great idea. Just so you know how that evolved where benches were installed on North Bay Road. This is the, this is the beauty of local government. Because a board member, the president of one of the Winston Towers buildings at a meeting, and our city manager, you were there at the time. And she came up after the meeting and she said, we need benches on, along North Bay Road so people have a place to rest.
Yeah, it was a great addition.
It was just, somebody came up and made the suggestion and the city absolutely implemented it in short order. So that's, that's how it goes, right? That's how, that's how local government works. So. But increasing that, whether it's trash cans or greater canopy, I know there's a discussion about that, creating more shade and canopy. Those are the.
Afternoons is hot, yeah.
Right. The ways to augment that, that, that whole experience. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that it? Is that all she wrote?
That's it.
That's all she wrote? Okay. No other public speakers? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.